This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for February 25th, 2025, and about 6:00, so whatever, what time is this? 6:14, 6:15. Okay. So if we could stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and for all.
The health department. There. Yeah. Good. Yeah. We can pull up another couple of chairs if we want to. Good. So, all right. So tonight, we are basically Select Board and Finance Committee joint meeting, and we're continuing on with our series of budget hearings for FY '26. And we have four different departments up for tonight. And before we begin, I just wanted to make one small announcement, just to acknowledge. Some of you may know that we have a few centenarians in town, I think. There are three people that have been at the age of 101, and unfortunately, we've lost one of them last weekend. So Leona Hendrick has passed away at the age of 101. So Select Board and I will get a card together, and we'll send a card out to the family when we meet on Tuesday. But I just wanted to acknowledge that it's pretty amazing that we've got three people in town that have been here and lived that long. Quite amazing. But we've got two more that are doing quite well. I've talked to both of them, so they're doing well. Okay. So with that, I think we have the Board of Health up first.
Hello.
Whoever would like to come on up. Yeah, come on up, pick a chair, and take another chair if you like, and Scott will run through your slides. We've got your handouts and stuff that you've given us with the budget and the budget scenario, so you don't have to, you know, explain, you don't have to read it all. But we'll have it up on screen, and you can figure out how you want to introduce it, Scott. So we'll leave it to you.
Just two things of note from last year. The first one is the request is 35 hours for the Health Director. In the last couple of years, it's been 32 hours funded from the General Fund and then three hours from the Septic Betterment System. The other thing that we moved into the budget was the monitoring costs for the closed landfill. Over the last couple of years, that's been under the transfer station. I know we talked about it last budget. It's really a cost that should be for the town. If the transfer station didn't exist, or whatever, we'd still have to pay for that money. So it's not necessarily a transfer station cost. It's the entire town we have to pay for, no matter what. So generally, health departments kind of oversee landfills and those types of things. So that's what that's for. And then the budget, you know, the Health Department budget is relatively straightforward. Personnel cost and operating cost, so.
Okay. So I'm here, my name's Caitlin Brooks. I'm here with Kate Savarrez and Jerry, Health Director. Just wanted to quickly review our budget. I know there's been some changes to Jerry's wage line. I believe the most recent number was $64,127.70, which is reflected in the spreadsheet above. And that's based upon the rate of $35.10 an hour, so I'm glad to see that that's updated. As Scott mentioned about the Septic Betterment fees, the amount of time that's been actually allocated to management of the Septic Betterment Funds does not equate to three hours per week, which is why we're advocating for it to be centrally funded. Jerry's been working 35 hours since the pandemic, and it's been about five years, so we think it's reasonable for it to be centrally funded at 35 hours. I mentioned to Scott that we, our budget has been pulled from various sources over the past couple of years. One thing that was not noted in this budget that I wanted to kind of discuss and, you know, just kind of come to a consensus about. So Charlie Konecki has been doing our health inspections. Last year, we increased some of our fees to ensure that the costs of the inspections that were being performed were covered by the change in cost of fees. However, we, I did a calculation, I reviewed all of his invoices for the past year, and about 25% of his inspections are related to housing, which doesn't generate fees. So while we have this revolving fund, the board estimated that it was going to be between $12,000 and $15,000 of expenses that weren't going to be covered through the revolving fund. We have about $11,000 in there currently. We were given a $10,000 start seed. His fees kind of vary per month depending on what's happening, but we don't anticipate a significant decrease in the amount of housing enforcement activities. So yes, I, the past year, it was somewhere between $12,000 and $15,000 that we think is reasonable to request for supplemental inspection fees. Also want to acknowledge that a lot of the work that he's doing is extremely time-consuming. Court processes, you know, dealing with re-inspections. And so I just want to make sure that that's accounted for in the budget.
Right now, it's not there, correct?
Right. No, it's not there.
Right. So you, your suggestion was to bring it to this meeting as a discussion point, so here I am. Our revenue to date, so we usually bring in about $40,000 to $42,000 each year. We're currently have brought in a revenue of $36,828.27, so I am optimistic that we will make more than what we did last year because of the adjustment in fees. However, a lot of our inspection fees come in through permits at the beginning of the year. So it's kind of difficult for me to know exactly what our end-of-year revenue will end up being. Also, this revolving fund is a new thing for us as of July 1st, and so acknowledging that it's not like we have past years to reference and, you know, longitudinal data to pull from, so I'm hoping over the next few years, we'll be able to collect that information and be able to come up with a clear number of what to request. The only other change from the previous year was we asked for an additional $500 for the Sharps program. The reason for this is the cost of Sharps disposal and the cost of the Sharps containers has increased substantially, as with other inflationary changes. This is something that I'm seeing at my work. And so that changes, that just allows for us to continue providing free Sharps containers and disposal for Southampton residents, which is pretty well utilized. Everything else, other than the landfill monitoring that you mentioned, Scott, is level-funded. Any questions?
I'll start off with one. So you mentioned the $40,000 to $42,000 of permitting fees, and a lot of that is, what is, it's permits, like, so your trash hauler permit, it's your food inspections?
Food inspections, yeah. Restaurant, Title V inspections, all of those things go into that account.
And those funds go into where after you've collected? Where do they end up?
In the revolving.
In this new revolving fund, right?
The only thing I have is a revenue report, which is the year-to-date figure that I reference. I don't actually have the up-to-date figure as to what's in the account, but as of like a month ago, it was about $11,000.
Well, like a few, last week or a week before, it was $11,000.
Right.
You mentioned that some of these special projects were especially expensive. Do you have outstanding bills that are not related to the permit scheme?
Not, well, so this is another thing I talked to Scott about a little bit, is a lot of towns will have a budget line item for problem properties, which is the cost of boarding and securing properties. We have never had that. It's always kind of come out in the wash within terms of cost and recouping those costs, but it's certainly not guaranteed, right? Like, we're in a receivership process for one property, and some of those expenses can be $10,000, $15,000 upfront. Thankfully, Charlie's been very successful in helping us to get that money back, but it doesn't happen instantaneously.
Right. So that was a very good political answer. Do you have any outstanding invoices to Charlie?
To Charlie? No, we pay him out of the revolving fund.
I know that's the source. There's no outstanding invoice to Charlie for these unusually expensive projects?
No.
Thank you. There are, you described several categories that are outside the permit structure.
Yes.
Is, have you explored other ways to recoup the cost of those explorations? Understanding that there's a possibility of money later when everything is resolved, but in the current year, how do you cope? And I will note that although you received $10,000, you've been really good managing it, because you're up to $1,000. So please, go ahead.
So we, currently, the only, we've looked at a lot of different options for covering inspectional services. We have been in touch with the Regional Shared Public Health Explanations Program. They have started training trainers to be able to manage maybe some of the inspectional services in the future. In fact, this past year, they took over our food service inspections, and we still get to collect those fees. So that's actually been really great for us in Southampton. They're not yet offering housing inspections, but I've been in touch with Kristen Dearborn, who is the Regional Shared Services Coordinator, and expressed interest that if and when the housing inspections became available through their program, and again, they're servicing 17 communities with one or two inspectors. So what I would anticipate is that if they were able to take over some inspections, they would not do these problematic properties that have court dates that require extensive, I mean, Charlie's experience in dealing with problem properties and navigating the court system is incredibly valuable to Southampton.
I'll just bring it back to you.
You know, they might be able to.
A strategy for funding those projects for Charlie is uniquely valuable to us.
Well.
And I just, I want to interject a quick, just to be clear, so there's no confusion. So we're talking about kind of two separate things. So one thing is there are small fees that Charlie is directly associated with for these problem properties, and that's his just powers that he's connected to. The larger fees, like the $10,000 to $15,000 that we're talking about, is like charged to the town for securing boarding properties. There was an in-ground pool that was just left open, that we had to put a chain-link fence around one of these abandoned properties. So we're not paying Charlie that to do that. These are like third-party companies.
So to clarify, you're saying that those would not come out of the revolving fund?
Correct.
There's a line item in the Building Commissioners' budget.
So the $12,000 to $15,000 that we estimated, and today, we're going to ask for $15,000 for Charlie's additional inspection services, is completely separate from a potential line item of problem properties. We're out. We don't even believe that we're going to necessarily propose that today, but I just don't want there to be any confusion between those two things.
And in terms of funding those, because, I mean, there's no way to collect permit fees for state-required housing inspections. We've done benchmarking with other communities. We've looked at other surrounding towns to see if there were any local, other towns that were collecting different fees that we weren't collecting, and there are not. It's just a statutory obligation of the town to provide those services. There was also a suggestion that maybe a local, another municipality might be able to take over some of those inspection services. What I would say is those inspections are still not going to collect a fee, so regardless of who's paying for it, I still feel like it's going to be a cost, you know, incurred by the town, whether or not it's East Hampton, Hoyo, Westfield, Southampton. There's no, there's no way to generate additional revenue around these inspections. And I will say that Charlie's been really trying to get caught up in the, you know, since the pandemic. We have a number of multifamily dwellings that are supposed to be inspected annually that weren't for a while, and those properties required a lot of time, but I'm hoping now that a lot of them are becoming compliant, that the work around those properties will decrease. But just as we kind of cross properties off the list, there's just as many that we're getting calls about, or other situations that are arising. And so, you know, based upon the information we have from the past year, year and a half, I don't anticipate that the number of housing issues is going to decrease.
So just to be clear, I'm sure I understood everything. So you had in the revolving fund, I think you had a $10,000 seed money, right? That was in the revolving fund, and you added $1,000 to it now from revenues. We know that you might collect close to $40,000 in revenues during the year, so you're halfway through the year, basically. So in my understanding, that out of the revolving fund, there would be enough to pay Charlie for his services, but if you had to put in the chain-link fence or board up a pool or whatever, that comes from something else.
That would be from something different. And I'm bringing it up because Scott and I kind of discussed, like, making sure that that, and I didn't know that there was a line item in the housing.
It's in this budget proposal.
Oh, okay. So then, as long as that money is somewhere.
I just put that in.
One theory, though, there isn't going to be, there's going to be 25% less than we need in the revolving fund to cover Charlie's expenses.
So if we could focus on that for a minute? Because I think, if I could state it a little differently. You started on day one with $10,000. We're seven months in, you have $11,000 left. You've collected $33,000, I think.
$36,000.
$36,000 that has flowed in there and gone out to cover all Charlie's bills, which has let you, left you net positive $1,000, because you get a $10,000 seed money. So you have four, five months, give or take, left to go. You're front-loaded on your permits.
Yes.
Right? So historically, you can see those. And historically, you probably have a good idea of what permits are coming out in June, May, April.
More Title V inspections.
Right. And after looking at that, that's where you think, somebody has a cash flow or workflow paper over 12 months with historical data that would point to where you're coming in with this $15,000 number, right? Or is it a gut feeling?
It is not a gut. I went through one year of Charlie's expenses. I highlighted all of the inspections that do not collect a fee, and that's how I came up with the 25% number. Again, it's based on one year of data, because we, before that, we had a part-time inspector that wasn't covering some of this work. So that number is based upon the past year of Charlie's inspections. And I used a calendar year, because, I mean, this is a calendar year, so I might have used a slightly different, like, December to December timeframe, but I used 12 months of inspection data to come up with that 25% figure.
Can I ask a question? It would help me to understand, I think there's two different requests of money, maybe two different colors of money here. One for additional time for Charlie to do housing inspections, which maybe that's the 25%?
Mm-hmm.
And then maybe there's another pot of money that is in events that you have to do things to secure a property. Can we detail out what those two lines are, just so we understand what this, I think you're talking about two separate pots of monies.
Right, but you're saying that's in the building.
So on this budget, Dan, the second one, the $8,700, is an offset from the transfer station. So last year, that was over in the transfer station budget. That's going here. The bottom one is $15,000 to cover the independent contractor. Over on the Building Commissioners' budget, there's another new line with $20,000 in there to cover the fences.
Oh, perfect. As long as it's somewhere.
Because I'm assuming that in theory, it would get turned over to the Building Commissioner to make sure it gets done, and that's why the money's sitting over in his budget.
I mean, historically, I think we've kind of managed those processes independently with the assistance of, I mean, it's independently, but Charlie's doing a lot of that work. I don't know, honestly, as long as the money is somewhere and it's accounted for, I think that that's, it doesn't matter.
And it is a new entry to the budget, so you don't have to so act like.
Any other questions?
I would just say that I know that when we originally started down this road of the revolving account, it was clear, at least to me from the Board of Health, that there were going to be things that were going to be done, that there was no revenue source coming in, and there was, in theory, kind of be a trial and error time to find out what our baseline seed deposit was going to have to be every year.
Yes. And I will mention that we also removed Nicole Schaub's wage line from the budget, not last year, but the year before. Well, we had it in there, but we used it to pay Charlie's expenses. That's not reflected here. So we had a budget of, say, $15,000 to pay for Nicole, Nicole's health inspection services when she was employed by the town. That was a couple of years ago at this point, so it might not be showing here.
Okay. Now move a piece, I had that. We had the revolving fund, started at $10,000. Over time, went up and down. It landed at $11,000 currently, right? If there were services that Charlie was doing, or sorry, the Health Inspector was doing that weren't refundable, then why wouldn't that number, that $11,000 is currently now, why wouldn't it have gone down to $0?
Because, okay, so in the beginning of the year, you have a lot of permit fees for the whole year. So this seed, this revolving fund went into effect on July 1st, so it's been about five months. We're going to notice that the beginning part of the year, we're front-loading the inspection, the inspection fees, but we, I don't know how many of those fees we're going to continue seeing. Hopefully, we'll still continue to have the Title V inspections. We'll continue to generate some revenue from food inspections, food truck inspections over the summer, but we, again, we increased the fees, hoping that it would offset some of those costs, but you can't have the person paying for a Title V inspection cover the cost of Charlie going out to address a problem property, right? It's not fair to put off that cost on somebody else. So, yeah, we, like I said, somewhere between $12,000 and $15,000, and I'm just saying $15,000, because we don't want to underestimate what the need is. Again, saying if we don't use that money, it's going to remain in the budget.
So it's kind of like a 50% increase from, it was $10,000. You want to, you think there's about 25% of his time he does these extra activities?
25% of his time that's not collecting fees, yes.
So you, but if you started at $10,000, we added 50, oh, sorry, we added $5,000 to that?
Think of it this way, we've already paid Charlie $35,000 for five months, right? $36,000, and we pretend that it's $11,000.
It's about $3,500 a month average.
Yeah. And this is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is effectively moving those uncompensated fees to a separate line item?
Correct.
Pulling that out of the revolving fund?
Yes.
So it's separate buckets now.
So following that line of reasoning, I'm confused by the title of that new line, because you have a fee schedule for what? Inspection services? And you've drawn the distinction between your fee income and the activities that generate no fee. So I'd be.
Mandatory, mandatory non-fee inspections.
We, I mean, it could be contracted, contracted services or something like that.
No, 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 like the housing ones where no one's going to pay the fee, but the inspection has to happen. That's, that should be on the general revenue.
So it's mandated fee.
That's what Stephen's saying.
I was going to say, not.
So you could break out the invoice.
Not reimbursable, not non-villable.
Non-villable, there you go.
Non-villable inspections or something. Charlie's invoice should almost split between the two, so you can get them, one to the revolving fund, and one against this budget.
Oh, that's a good way of thinking about it.
Right, because then the defense says, we need the general fund money to pay for that, because nobody else out there is going to, it's an unfunded mandate that we have to do these inspections.
And we could certainly, for us to split that, it's, that's not a problem. We haven't done that year-to-date, but.
Right, but I think a year from now, when there's all new faces here.
Right.
It'd be easier to say, here's the unfunded mandates that we're doing, this is what it costs.
And that's kind of what I did in preparation for this meeting, was kind of define what was, what was reimbursable and what was not. And it's not dollar-for-dollar.
Sure. But when you come here next year, you'll basically be able to show that the revolving fund is standing alone without those services.
Yeah, hopefully. Yeah, that would be ideal.
Do you have a sense of how many multifamily places we have in town that Charlie has to inspect?
Charlie wrote a list.
He did, and I don't have the list. It was two pages long.
More than one, less than 100.
I'll give you, I can give you a chart number, because Charlie is starting, we're trying to, hey, not, get better information, because we're also learning about some of these properties as time goes on.
Yeah. So all the, all the, all the housing ones that are not funded elsewhere, that are not non-villable, would come out of this new line, is what you're talking about?
Correct.
Right, if there's no fee associated because it's a state or something like that.
And then my guess, my follow-up question to that would be, how would we, would you want us to change how we've addressed the separation of funding since the beginning of the fiscal year, or would this be something that we would do going forward?
I would probably make sure that any inspections that we have to hire the contractor for should probably be reserved in a separate pot, and then the other inspections that are done by the Health Department would be, would be separate, just so we can make sure that the contractor is revenue-neutral on those fees that we collect.
Because I guess you are kind of asking for two things. You're asking for this for the budget going forward, but then it also sounds like you're asking for a mid-year appropriation to get through the rest of this year, when free cash gets served.
I kind of anticipated that the $10,000 seed fund would be this, like, would, for this current year, would offset those, a majority of those costs. That was my hope. I wasn't hoping to ask for more money. I guess we'll see what happens at the end of the year, but I.
So then to answer your question, I would say July 1st, make sure you're separating it.
Separating it, okay. That's fine.
Sure. The only other comment I have, and it's not necessarily, it's not for you guys, but on here, I think it would be good, under the landfill monitor ring, after the example in red, put that this is an offset from the, because you're really reallocating that cost from the transfer station.
Reallocating, yeah, from the transfer station.
So to the, to the uneducated person looking at this, it looks like a brand-new cost, and they're not going to know enough to go to the transfer station and see the relief, per se.
Yeah. There was a note, note at the bottom down there, but it's okay.
Yeah. Because really, that's neutral on the budget.
Right.
The money that you're bringing in for the food inspection stuff, that's not paying somebody that actually did. About how much is that, and is that going into the revolving fund?
We, this just started at about, six months ago, Jerry? Six months? I'd say six-ish months ago, maybe 20 food inspections. I don't, I can try to get to a more definitive dollar figure.
Might be more than that, if you begin counting, you know.
Food trucks.
Trucks and everything. That's time-consuming, because it has to be done with the fire department, too.
It's all right, so they're doing it.
Scheduling people. We've asked the state to take it over and do it regionally, and they don't.
I'm on that sub, I'm going to be on that subcommittee, too, because we, I believe that a regional approach to inspectional services for food trucks makes sense in our area, but it's kind of.
But when somebody pulls that permit, the check goes into the revolving account, right?
That's correct. I'd say $2,500. That's a, that's a grand, that's the original number.
What's the permit fee for food trucks and food inspections?
The food inspections go based off of occupancy of the, um.
Restaurant.
Yeah. But I would say I have $100 for the size of ours in town per inspection.
Yeah.
And the regional program is state-funded?
Yes.
Not a cost to the town to participate?
Not yet.
They could remove it. With the caveat that with all of the things happening in the world, this, this also could dissolve.
It could go away.
There's no guarantee this is going to remain, so we're hopeful that it will.
So to answer your question, there was $15 million allocated for improvement in public health resources at the state level that are separated amongst these different, well, they're really trying to, not mandate, but encourage shared service agreements. So by offering extra resources and funding for these shared public health resources, it kind of incentivizes communities to work at a more regional level. The difference between Western Mass and Eastern Mass is that we're geographically very different, and so it's not that easy to have one inspector who's covering 15 towns, you know, because it's just impossible to get from place to place. And so that's one of the obstacles, is how do you, how do you designate inspectors for such a large geographic area in such a short timeframe?
Sure.
I'm just grateful they're able to do anything.
Yeah. Good point. Any other comments, questions, anybody?
Well, I'll make one comment. I've been the liaison to the Board of Health for only a few months, but this whole concept of trying to figure out the financial part of it seems to take an awful lot of energy on their part, trying to think creatively about how to do this, and it is a challenge. I, I hear them, the Board, trying to think of other ways, think of creative ways to have things covered. And also, I'm looking at the statement made in the budget book about the attempt to hire. When the, when the health agent resigned in 2022, they're saying they did just tremendous amount of work to try to find somebody to be a regular employee, not as a contracted employee. Now, we know Charlie Konecki has extensive experience and background and knows the town super well, and that's all very beneficial, but a regular employee would be really good. And I know you, you know that, so I just want to comment that, I don't have any answers for it, but that they're, you know, they're sensitive to how else they could become, you know, economical and try to control the cost. And I think, I'm going to add one more thing, if there were other ideas on how to do this, there are always people who's always reaching out and saying, got any other ideas on how to do this? And I don't, but.
Hey, that's why we have a revolving fund app.
Yeah, that's where that came from.
So that's my general comment of it.
I appreciate you so much for being our liaison.
You're so great.
Truly.
Freeman.
Yep.
So that's my general comment of it.
Right.
Thank you so much for being our liaison.
It's all great.
Truly.
Freeman.
Yep, and just one last question for me. I guess, so right now, there's the three extra hours that you're talking about for the health director are coming out of the septic betterment fund. That is proven to be workable, from what I understand?
So that was a proposal, we went to the budget meeting, I think, last year, and we advocated for 35 hours. We said Jerry's been working 35 hours since the pandemic. I, I see what's coming down the pipeline in terms of mandates and requirements for us to develop regional emergency preparedness frameworks. I mean, we're three volunteers on the board, so like, we're already putting in a lot of time, and so I, I do think it's reasonable for Jerry to be funded at 35 hours to adhere to these new regulations, participate in training. She's here last tonight, I think, you know, the six o'clock meeting. Um, that suggestion was made because there was a pot of money that could be accessed. The question is whether or not it's appropriate to be using those funds when they're not actually being used to manage septic, septic, really, so get administrative fees. So we collect administrative fees, and we have this unused pot of money because we've always been pulling out of the, the central salary budget or the general fund. Um, but I know Jerry's not using three hours a week to, to administer a septic betterment fund, so I guess that's, I, I pump that question back to you and say, is this something that we should be, is it appropriate? Could this be something that we might face scrutiny for if it were to be audited at a future date? I don't actually know the answer to that question, but it wasn't something that we proposed as a solution, so I guess I'll follow your lead a little bit. It is nice that we have that pot of money there.
Yeah, there's a fair, fair amount of money in that. Last time I looked, I think, I was like.
I don't even know how much is in there, but I didn't even know that there was that pot of money there. You know, it was a learning lesson during our last budget review.
There's about $36,000 there, and that money also, if somebody came in and needed it, we could use that money for a septic loan, and then they would, um, you know, be able to pay it back.
Okay, anybody else have any other comments, questions?
Just want to understand the paperwork. So it says 35 hours for the health director, so that went up?
So that's, it's currently 35 hours, but three of those hours are being funded through the septic betterment.
Okay.
And I also will mention, I'm sorry, I failed to mention this before, there was previous feeling that the, the health director position was a non-exempt position, but under re-review, it sounds like Scott is in support of that position becoming an exempt position, and this is something that we have been, been in support of the entire time I've been on the board. So, um, I think it's appropriate for it to be an exempt position. She's on call 24/7 in the event of an emergency. Um, yeah, so we are welcoming that position being transitioned to an exempt position if that is going to be authorized.
Okay, good. No other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Jerry, you want to meet down there? Yeah. All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks. You're welcome.
Thanks so much. Good night, everybody.
Nice.
All side over.
Okay. Next up, I believe, we have the fire department, so chief.
I did, I did printouts of, um, some of the paperwork that the chief had submitted, so a lot of the statistics and stuff are in your packets that the chief's going to go over. I'll put them on the screen as well.
Hi, good evening, Rich Petzoldi, Fire Chief. So I just have a quick review of the department. Uh, we currently have, uh, 49 members on the department. That includes myself and the part-time administrative assistant we share with PD. Out of the 49, um, 30 of them work full-time for a municipal fire department. Um, pre-work at local hospitals, uh, to work at private ambulance service. Of the 49, 11 live in Southampton. Everybody else lives out of town. So we have, we have members from East Hampton Fire, Westfield, North Hampton, and then they're, they're kind of scattered here and there, Agawam Oil, Chigabee. Uh, moving on to call volume, uh, it was our busiest year last year, 1,048 calls. Um, I mean EMS calls, we did 794, um, 629 of those were transports. The rest were, um, just well-being checks, lithocists, uh, that kind of thing. Um, so last year, we did, in 2023, we did 993. 10 years ago, we ended the year at 530, so we, we doubled in 10 years. Um, our biggest customers, I guess you'd call them, would be the urgent care in the six group homes in town. Uh, we went there 141 times last year. And in 128 College Highway, the, uh, the building behind Cumberland Farms, we went there 105. Um, that is low-income and elderly live there. Um, mutual aid, we, uh, we responded to other towns 58 times, and we had 188 times, uh, different departments came to Southampton. Some of those, a lot of those were, uh, overlapping calls, meaning our ambulance was already out and another call would come in. Uh, that actually happened 298 times last year. Um, so that is.
Would that be both, both ambulances out or just one?
What's that?
Would that be both ambulances were out?
Uh, it could be both ambulances out, uh, it could be the one ambulance out. Um, and also, that number would include if our ambulance is coming back from the hospital and hasn't made it back to the station and ends up going on another call. So that's where they were overlapped, that's why there's so many. Uh, moving on to our, our vehicles, everything is in service except for, obviously, engine one, uh, is still, is out of service for major repairs. Um, that we're looking to replace with the FEMA AFG grant. Uh, I can speak more about that in a minute. Also, A2 just went out of service, um, on Thursday for a fuel leak. I got notified today that it's, the fuel tank is leaking, and that being a 2008 Chevrolet ambulance, I called, uh, Belize Chevy for another tank, and that tank is obsolete, and he checked, he was able to check all the Chevy dealers in the United States, and nobody has one.
Wow.
So we're going to have to see about possibly repairing that. It's a steel tank, so it might be able to be repaired. If not, we might have that one made especially for it. Um, brush truck, chief car, those are all fine. The, uh, two fire trucks are being pump tested, our annual pump test, those will happen in April. Uh, one thing that I, one of the things I added to the capital expense was the, uh, utility pickup. It's, uh, it's rotted out pretty bad. I, I brought it to a body shop and they said, you know, you can't fix it, it's too far gone. And the frame is, is rotted as well, so they don't even recommend, uh, pulling our trailer for our UTV.
That's what I would have told Bob.
That, 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 that,
So there's a company that comes in every year. They unload it, they test it, and then they re-rack it. And it takes them, only takes them like three, four hours to do everything. Our SCBA compressor is another thing I'm added, I've added to the capital expense spreadsheet. That was actually donated from Barnes Fire. This is going back probably, I started in 93, so it probably was right around 95, 96 that we got that. And it was manufactured in 1990, so it seemed, they got their money out of that. It's, obviously, it's an old unit, and it's difficult to get in replacement parts for it. It's serviced yearly, and the air quality test is done quarterly, so, I mean, it's still okay to use for now, but eventually it's gonna fail. Our Scott packs are due to be inspected in May. That was another part of our FEMA AFG grant. SCBA bottles, those are tested every five years for hydro tests. This year, we had to send out six for that. As part of our line item on our budget, the structural turnout gear, I've ordered three new sets. So that'll keep us on schedule for our 10-year NFPA ruling. Fire prevention, we've started that, working with the senior center. We've done slip and fall classes, blood pressure clinics, CPR first aid. We actually did one for the town this past June. We did a CPR first aid class. That went well. We're gonna redo that this year. We are scheduled to go into Norris School in April to do a safe student awareness of fire education classes for first and third grade this spring. We currently have three members that are trained in fire prevention for schools. Our AED, the AED that Council of Agen is receiving, we have it at the station. We're just waiting on the training device. Basically, the training device is, it's an AED, but it's strictly for training, so that you can put the pads on, push the button, and, you know, nobody will get shocked.
Make sure you get the right one.
Is that the only AED you have?
No, the Town Hall has one right inside the door on the left. That one there, if you open the cabinet, it will assign the alarm to dispatch that somebody opened it and took the AED out, so we'll be notified right away. The one that's gonna be in the senior center, it's gonna be in a compartment, it has alarm in it, but it's only gonna ring in the senior center, because somebody's obviously gonna be there, so.
Is there one at the school?
The school has two of them. And they're set up the same as the one here in Town Hall, they have alarms in them.
Any of the commercial properties have their own, like Big Y or anything that you?
That I don't know. I believe Big Y does, yes.
We approved funding for parks?
They've requested it in their budget.
Yeah. So, fire inspections, I've updated the permit fee list, and that needs to be reviewed by a select board, and then I'll post it on the town website. It hadn't been updated since 2015. There's not a lot of changes there. Some of the fees, a lot of them are set by the state, so you can't really change a lot of them. Last year, I did 167 inspections. That's FY '24. So that brought in $8,900 to the town.
And Chief, is that smoke alarms and CO detectors?
Right, smoke alarms, CO, you know, any time a house is sold, propane tanks, oil tanks, oil burners. When we go and do the liquor license inspections, we get a fee for that. The, there's actually two daycare preschools in town, so we get a fee for that as well. Those get done once a year.
What is the inspection fee, fee? What is the fee?
Well, it varies on what the inspection is. So if you were to sell your house in town, it's $50. Like the liquor license one is $100. Propane tanks, depending on the size of the tank, it's either $40 or $60. So there's a wide range, like the food truck inspections are $60. So, now that money gets turned back into the general budget. So this year, we've done 167 inspections, or, excuse me, this year we've done 119, and $6,500 that's gone back to the town. Now, the fire inspections are, East Hampton Fire received a grant last year, and they started November 1st. It's been working out really well, but the, that expires, that grant expires October 30th. So we're currently trying to negotiate with East Hampton for them to continue, but it's, they're requesting $15,000, and, I mean, where you only bring in like not quite $10,000, so. But we're still working on that. State grants, I've received two state grants so far. One was for a gas be, gas meter from MEMA. So now we'll have three gas meters. Apparently, we have them on our two fire trucks, engine three and engine four. So once the new one goes into service, one of those I'll be able to put into the chief car, because a lot of times I'll respond to the scenes, and I still have to wait for the truck to show up with the proper meter. So this will save some time. Our second grant was through Mass Fire Service. That was $15,000, $15,500. So I ordered some rescue strut kit and some new lifting airbags. We don't have the rescue struts now, so if a car, any kind of car accident where it ends up on its side, or it's, you know, on its roof, you know, we can't stabilize it to get the people out of the car. The airbags are, that we currently have are 20 years old, so we've ordered two of those. And the third grant, it just came out last week, the fire, Mass Fire Safety and Equipment Grant, it was a five-year grant, and, so they had money left over from the, from the five years, so the town portion is $7,750. So that came out last week. You had to have all your paperwork in by this week, and then they're gonna notify you in April if you receive it, and then you have to spend that money and have the equipment in by June 30th. So that's why I've ordered two more sets of turnout gear, and what that'll do is hopefully it'll free up money for next year out of that, out of that line item. Finally, the FEMA grants, the AFG assisted firefighter grants, with help from the grant committee, we've applied for two grants. One is for a new tanker for $7,500.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
Need some commas in there.
And then the second one is for to replace our outdated Scott packs. Currently, those packs, all of them are over 15 years old.
What does SCBA mean?
Self-safes, self-contained breathing apparatus.
Oh, okay.
So, it's the air pack with the bottle and the mask. So we're just requesting the packs themselves. So I'll let, the AFG grant, FEMA received 7,176 applications for $4 billion that people have requested.
Yeah.
So, and this year, there's $291 million available for that grant, so it's quite competitive.
Yeah. Keep our fingers crossed. We don't hear about this until July and August, and it's usually been enrolling, rolling announcement between July and September, we hear whether we have it or not.
So also in your, your thing, you should see a, a list of all our incidents, our breakdown. Another list is our apparatus, how many calls they went on. So you can see A1 went on 572, A2 went on 120, and then they go down. The other ones listed down the bottom would be East Hampton ambulance, East Hampton engine. MFD is Montgomery tanker, so when we have any kind of fires out of the hydrant district, we automatically call Montgomery and West Hampton. Obviously, Westfield ambulance, but Westfield engine.
All right, can we jump into the budget part here?
Yeah. Just a couple of things I just want to point out. We have the updated fire EMS wage scale. That was approved a couple of weeks ago. It's gonna be changing the hourly rate significantly, but we, it's still gonna be level funded for this year.
Yes.
And that's in part because of the two, two full-time positions. I know that the chief, we finally have everything squared away, job description, we have the wage schedule, and now that we're gonna be looking to hire those two full-time positions that were approved a couple of years ago at a town meeting.
Right.
And then significant capital needs, especially with the ambulance getting older. I didn't know about the casting, but.
Yeah, the ambulance, I put it on for actually next year's capital expense. They're quite expensive now, 492, so, $100,000, yeah. And then the problem with the ambulances are they usually take about two years to get. They're such a backlog, so.
What begs the question, what do you have in ambulance receipts, and how is collections going?
That, I don't have the, I don't have that number on me. They've been going quite well. I'm working with postal to get all our overdue invoices taken care of, so I put in requests to them, and I haven't heard back from them yet, so.
Let me see if I might have the year today.
So those are for emergency calls?
Yes.
What about non-emergency? Do you do this, for example, if somebody who needs the assistance of an ambulance, but it's not an emergency, goes to the hospital, they're being discharged, you don't, you do those?
We only collect fees if we transport to the hospital. We don't, we don't pick up people from the hospital, no.
So if they show up at a house, and they refuse, and they refuse service, and the ambulance leaves without the person, no charge?
Right, yeah, there's no charge.
Yeah, but what about, because of my background, you don't go to the hospital, help transfer people back home again, no need?
No, we don't do that. We're strictly a 911 emergency service.
So ambulance receipts, we don't know what that is right now?
We can look it up.
It would be in the special revenue file created, but that would only have up through the cemetery first revenue.
Well, while they're looking at that, you mentioned some of the group homes I know, and then the building behind the Cumberland Farms, with over 100 calls in there. Are they all, in your view, legitimate calls? Or, I guess, and without singling a group out, do you have repeat offenders for false alarms and false calls that are drain on service?
Not so much false calls. We have regulars, or, in the business, I guess they call them frequent flyers, where we've had people where we'll bring them to the hospital, they don't like what the hospital says to them, they get discharged, and three hours later, they're, we're back there transporting again, so.
There's probably, there's probably not much we can do about that.
No.
I was just wondering if there was any need to create some sort of bylaw that institutes fines for repeated false alarms?
We don't have a lot of false alarms, like the medical alerts or anything like that, no.
Okay.
We don't have a lot of, most of our, like, fire alarm calls, you know, it's a faulty detector, bad battery, something like that, so there's not a lot of repeat offenders there. Usually when we go to a house for a fire alarm, we can figure out which detector is bad, and, you know, we let the homeowner know or to.
And then they get it fixed, so it doesn't keep going, yeah.
So this would be the ambulance receipts, or?
Yeah, until December 31st, 283.
That's one fiscal year? No. Oh.
Well, I think, I think we took like 400 out of it for this last budget.
Yeah, this is cumulative, right? So this is, this is not one year?
It doesn't close out.
Oh, goes back to 2006?
That's when it was established.
Probably earlier than that.
Yeah, so all, all those fees go into the general fund. The only money out of that that we use is for intercept fees, so.
So the 283 up there that's listed for intercept fees, is that the sole source of what I call ambulance receipts? Or what I know to be ambulance receipts, or is there another line item?
No, those are.
That's where the coastal money goes?
Right, right.
Into that fund?
Yeah.
Is there another way to look at this? Because you see that coastal charges 4% for all the money that's.
Right. So all monies they collect, they get, they get 4%.
And then when you, when you have to do a transport, sorry, when you have to call in East Hampton or Westfield for a transport, because you guys are already out on a call or whatever, right now?
That town collects the insurance.
But right now, we only have, they, they collect the insurance, but we also are paying 500 per call for East Hampton, right?
East Hampton, we do only because of our, a few years ago, our state license was in jeopardy for paramedic service. So they worked out a contract with East Hampton where they would be our backup automatically. And so they charge a $500 fee. I've spoken to Chief Norris about that, and as soon as we get the two full-timers hired, they're gonna do away with that.
Okay.
On the ambulances this year, the state comes in every year and inspects them, we got a score of 100%, first time ever.
Don't tell them about the fuel tank.
They didn't have, we didn't have any defects to repair, and they also inspected the chief vehicle, and engine three are now certified first responder vehicles, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, there's some serious improvements there from a couple of years ago, so.
Yeah, we have a, we have a very good crew on there for our EMS coordinators and all the, you know, they all work for another department, so they know, you know, they're very professional.
Okay. All right. So, back to the other slide you had there. You wanna go through personnel first, or where we got?
So personnel, we broke out the fire chief and the administrative aide, that's shared 20 hours per, per week between the police department and the fire department, and then we separated out the two full-time positions, reflective of the new wage skill as well.
So just, just on that, is there, there must be some thought there why there's a difference in pay? Are they both, they're both paramedics, right?
Yes.
You're looking to hire two paramedics and?
Yes. So one, one is currently on the fire department now, so he's just.
So is that potentially the higher hourly rate?
Right.
And you're taking into account their years of service?
Line number three would be his rate, yes.
I get it.
And then the fourth one, we've, I mean, obviously, we haven't posted the position yet, but I've been, everybody knows to, you know, we have 30 people that work for other departments, so hopefully by word of mouth, we can get a good person.
We'll probably hire internally.
What's that?
For both? We'll probably hire internally for both.
Internally, yeah. People that already work for you.
One does, yeah.
Oh, one, okay.
The good news here, it sounds like these new salaries are something you can work with compared to what you had before.
Right.
Well, in the benefit here, at least right now at the fire, if you come over here, you don't have to pay your union dues. Where they're working at the same rate, they're paying union dues. And they got such a great boss to work for, they'd never want a union.
All right, what else we got? Go ahead.
The bulk of our wages actually come from the EMT, and those are the part-timers, so the top part is just our permanent full-time or benefit eligible positions or part-timers. Because we have so many part-timers, that's all just one big wage item right here.
So that big variance, the 93%, is because of the two new hires, anticipated new hires, okay?
Yep. And then the other, the other, the 138, that's based on the other fire department?
Well, I came up with that number by minusing out the two full-timers.
Oh, yeah.
What their pay would be. That's why the, the numbers are lower this year than last year. The wage, it'll stay the same, I mean, you know, the, my contract and the administrative assistant are due raises, that's why there's a difference in the amount of $3,000, $4,000. This year, you know, everything's, all my budget will be staying the same. The only request I made was a little bit more for fire building expense. That is because in the previous year, I had no way of tracking the ever-source bill. It always came in, you know, no payment needed. And now that we have the batter accounting, I can keep track of that. That's why we're actually behind a little bit on our building expenses. If everything stays the same, I'll be short like $4,000, which I can transfer from another account.
Are you getting your credits for the cowplops?
For what?
For the cowplops?
Yeah.
Because someone's getting all those credits.
Yeah, well, you should be, right? I mean, you've, you've been working at rectifying and reconciling the cowpower account.
It's going towards the ever-source bills, that's why it gets no pay.
Yeah, it's going through the ever-source bill, okay, yeah.
My, my building expense, you know, like I said, I spent $2,300 on, on new lights for a building outside. So that was, you know, one, hopefully a one-time expense. It was kinda like last year where fire truck maintenance, I spent all that money on tires. And then, you know, we're working on getting the town internet over at the fire station, so that would save, you know, right now I spend over almost $1,100 on internet. So. In terms of, it should all equal out where, you know, 3,000, I think should be good.
Yeah, Dan?
I want to ask you a question with building expense, because you mentioned some property on Boomer Road, maybe you had some kind of try to keep it down there with, is that where a night building there?
I try and keep it at 50 degrees, but even then.
That's the other fire station, for the South Party Town.
But, okay, so do we use it?
We, we store engine one in there now, and we store the trailer. So basically, it's a two-way garage.
Yeah.
Way back when, even before I started, there was like 30, I've heard 33 people out of that station a couple years ago, so this is back.
Do you know where it is, Jim?
I've never seen that, no idea.
It's over along, amongst the ponds.
Oh, okay.
If you go down County Road, you go past the, the towers on your left.
Yeah.
It's the first house, first street on the right, Boomer.
My question is, if we're not using it, should we just get it off our books and get rid of the building, or?
I think it's a gift. It helps with our ISO endurance rating.
Oh.
They have a, a station over there.
I see.
It's also covered parking for the engine. You wouldn't want that out, like, exposed to the elements, right?
There's that one other engine that is sort of, not terribly functional right now, but it's.
Going down, it's.
If the mice get it, you'll never get it.
Yeah.
And now?
Yeah.
Is it right there? Oh, I see, yeah.
And it's like a quarter, quarter of an acre?
Yeah. Very, very small building.
There's no sign, no nothing.
Never guessed.
I will tell you, a town resident asked me, why is it so messy looking? That was the person's concern. Are we really doing the right thing by our fire department? Why not carry it for the outside?
Refer him to the highway superintendent.
Is he here tonight? Anyway, I couldn't answer, because I'd never seen it.
Were they volunteering to pay for the building?
Yeah, really.
That would be a DBW job, I think.
I think at one point, there was, there was an old junky pickup that was on the outside, and a bunch of branches and stuff. Did you clean it up? Yeah, it didn't look too bad.
The pickup is still actually there, so they're in the weeds.
On the building, if you were to get a new fire, you know, public safety complex, wouldn't you still need to use this building?
Again, I, I'm not sure about the ISO rating, you know, because the, that fire station, the new one, this one here currently is so far away from the pond station. They go by mileage, even though, you know, technically, we don't use it, but.
It helps in different ways, yeah.
Thanks for that, Chris.
All right, other things? Anything else? Any questions, guys?
I had one question about the turnout gear. Given the 10-year life, should that actually be a capital request versus an expense like that?
It used to be, the problem is, I think with that, is we don't replace them all at once.
Okay.
We usually do three sets every 10 years. I mean, it doesn't, we submit a capital expense every year, but we would have to do it every year.
So you got rotating, how many do you have, and you, so every, every year you're rotating?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Like I said, with that second fire equipment grant, I'm gonna be purchasing two sets, which are actually, you know, they're coming off the line early, but it will save money for next year is the plan.
And then you're putting in how many here in the budget now, then?
Three.
Three.
Three, yeah. So that, three sets of gear is a little over $10,000, and then, you know, I use the rest on boots, helmets, gloves, because those are all on the same 10-year lifecycle.
And I'm assuming, so when you have people that are on your roster, I know over time we get things at select boards where, you know, somebody's resigned, or somebody hasn't been on duty for two years.
Right, we have gear.
You, you have the people that go away, but that gear is not transferable to somebody else?
It is, yes.
Oh, it is?
If it fits, it's. The new gear that we order is custom-fit for the person, but a lot of, you know, other guys will, they'll fit into, you know, the coat or the pants or whatever, so.
So the big picture is you're coming out pretty flat, right? And the reason, the change in salaries isn't a problem. The pay deficit is because of the money that you had allocated for the temporary employees? Does it offset that?
Right.
Okay.
Right, because, I mean, currently, you know, those positions are filled every day. It's just not the same person every day, so the, the pay rates vary, you know, depending on their years of service.
And remind us when the new compensation plan that we approved is gonna go into effect then? Not until?
That, the, I was told by the Treasury Department that they had to have a signed PCF, so I made up a whole list. The Policy Procedure Board signed it.
Okay.
The Bradley signed it, obviously, I signed it, it just needs to be signed by the select board.
Okay.
If already approved it, it just needs to be signed, and then.
We voted, we, we made it retro to the first full pay of this calendar year.
Was it like the 13th, January 13th or something? Yeah, okay. So that would apply to that, okay. Yeah, I don't think we've seen that in front of us yet, but we'll.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She said she was putting it in your mailbox downstairs.
Okay, I will check on my way out tonight. Okay, thanks. Okay, any other comments, questions, guys? This looks pretty straightforward in many ways.
I think it's straightforward, I mean, this is, I would point out, what I think is probably obvious to everybody, but just to put it on the record for those that are gonna watch from home later on, is the next catastrophe here is the equipment, is the ambulances and the fire truck.
Yeah.
We either find some grant money, or we're gonna need to come up with about $2 million, right? You said about $400,000, give or take, for an ambulance?
Right, it'll, by the time we order, it'll probably be over $500.
And we gotta figure out something with this pumper, whether we get the grant or not. We can't have box trucks when we need, when we need pumpers.
I know. Chief, when you were, I assume you had the ambulance already on a capital plan replacement schedule?
Yes, we have that. Well, we have the capital.
I mean, but you had it, but it was gonna be one that you were aiming to replace fairly soon, was it not?
Right.
And now you're gonna have to do it something earlier.
Should've been replaced a couple of years ago, yeah.
Oh, really? Okay.
But, we're supposed to be squirreling away X amount, percentage of the ambulance receipts into a special fund to pay for the ambulance when it comes up, and we haven't done that since I've been on the board. We used it the last time around for the ambulance, whenever that was.
Right, okay.
Which probably owe it here, I don't know what those ambulances. And, and I'm sure, you know, Randall's sitting here, too. The way we currently utilize the capital project plan is really a joke.
Yeah, no, we never have enough money to do the big items.
Exactly.
Totally agree. And I don't know how we would ever, even with ambulance receipts.
Here's my spreadsheet that I have.
Yeah, so it's 27 you were aiming at getting rid of that.
I put on this year, I'll submit for the compressor, I mean, I don't, I don't think I'll get it this year, the ambulance, and then eventually, you know, a few years down the road, was it? The ambulance, and then eventually, you know, a few years down the road, was it twenty-thirty-two, we'll have to replace the other ambulance. And then our Engine Three in two thousand, I can't see what that number is.
Thirty-five.
It'll be thirty years old.
Yeah, so your first ambulance, though, you were going to, the one that's already giving you a problem, is that the same ambulance that's giving you the problem?
Right, that's the one that's out of service currently, yeah.
So even with the ambulance receipts, though, I mean, suppose we set up a stabilization fund or whatever for the ambulance, future ambulance replacement?
There is one.
We have one, okay. But, I mean, how much money do we have in that? We're never going to save enough to buy a new ambulance, are we?
Yeah, I mean, the problem is, we're not putting any money into it over the last several years, and the costs of ambulances are increasing more than we're putting into it, so... Realistically, we're going to have to go on a big funding chunk.
What's, what's the typical useful life of an ambulance? Ten years, fifteen years?
Yeah, all depends on usage, but yeah, I mean, I...
So it's almost like you got to take the first fifty thousand in ambulance receipts. So every ten years, there'd be half a million dollars in there.
A-one, if we replace it, it would be fifteen years. That's the bottom one. Obviously, A-two is a two thousand eight, so...
But the other option, if the capital committee ever gets together, is there are funding mechanisms that the capital committee can put forward, you know, outside, you know, by town law or by law, you know, whether it's a debt exclusion or anything like that. They can put together this package and be able to show it to the voters. This is why we need, we need to fund two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars every year in capital cost to be able to eat away at these things.
Right, have something for way.
That is, next year's project is to do a cohesive capital plan for everything, so...
I just know the next time you get a chief's car, no heated seats, okay? That's a little extra luxury there for the taxpayers to pay for. You could have AC. No heated seats.
Boy, that is a... He's steering wheel.
Oh, my goodness!
Let the record show, you did not purchase that one at all.
No, you didn't purchase that one, right? Very good, all right, well, no other questions? Thank you very much, Chief.
Appreciate it, all right, thank you.
Very clear and very well detailed, so thank you. Okay, next up, I believe, we have the highway department. Hi, Randall?
Randall, do you want to use your computer? Want to sit here?
I don't know, how much detail do you all want to see?
Fifty thousand.
About forty-five minutes.
With a lot of formulas, and that's up to you. Do you have a plug-in?
Yeah.
The question is going to be, how do we switch back and forth between...
Well, maybe, why don't we go through these things first, and then if you've got supplementary sheets, that might be useful, but, you know, I mean, I think, you know, we went through a lot of detail with, you know, with the chief of police when he did his, but I don't know that we have to go into that level of minutia.
Oh, there's a ladybug that's in the touchscreen.
Get out of here! Never know what's around here.
About to call it Nova's.
All right. Let's see how we can get going with this first, anyway.
Are we doing both transfer station and highway tonight?
Probably just highway.
Good. We still have to work out indirect costs.
A little bit bigger, maybe?
So for the personnel, we do have to finish up our contract with the highway superintendent. We have the administrative assistant, Robin, who actually works for the transfer station, the highway department, and also provides services for the water department. We have eight budgeted positions, four are currently filled. We're looking to fill these, at least aggressively advertise them over the next couple of months, fill a couple of them. For the most part, the senior foreman, foreman, and the two machine operators, those are the ones that are filled.
One machine operator, one laborer.
Oh, one laborer, I'm sorry. So we're looking to do mechanic and three machine operators. We budgeted those at the opening, the lower step...
Minimum qualification for the position, yes.
With the new wage scale, so we're hoping to be able to attract some, some people.
So mechanic and three machine operators, I'm just...
I have a question you'd like to ask you. How come it's a hundred percent variance for everything in the bottom bucket?
So, if you can see, actually, you're right here, so you can see this. I, what I do, my spreadsheet for, for wage calculations, I have it in a slightly different formula than Scott has it. I haven't, we haven't broken out different lines for overtime wages. It's always been, I have one wage for general highway, which funds thirty-three weeks, and then I have one fund for winter roads, which funds nineteen weeks. So I've also, I've also calculated it like that. I have all the numbers to separate out, it's just, it's never been presented like that.
But our childrens are still the same?
I mean, no, no, they're not, because we just negotiated the union, the CBA.
Oh, right.
Where we have some, we brought wages up to more competitive levels. So there is a pretty big variance there anyway, but we have to fill positions to get work done, so... I think the select board has, we worked really well to get towards that goal.
So where are the principal differences between, I guess, the top table and the bottom table? The gross total of six-hundred-nine thousand versus six-fourty-six, seven? To the really high level?
The difference in the wages from the ramifications of the CBA.
Well, yeah, but your CBA says six-hundred-nine total, and then you got six-fourty-six. So the, the two numbers should match.
Yeah, that, that looks, it's just an error.
See what I'm saying, Randall?
Yeah. Yeah. That needs to be just... We went through this, and we got them to match Scott turning our meeting.
Yeah, just a formula error.
Didn't do anything.
Right, yeah, I'm going to do the screen on this, for some reason it cuts it off, so it's down here.
Yeah, but no, sorry, scroll up. So the top section, fiscal year twenty-six salary subtotal, six-thousand-nine, six-hundred-nine thousand, right?
Yeah.
That cumulative now down. The requested is six-hundred-and-forty-six.
Sorry.
So I'm just guessing, that's not outside contractors or something?
No, these are only in-house wages, yeah. I can't help you.
So what is the...
This is formula, I'm sure it's the formula.
What is the total salaries regular, that's, that's that one from up above, right?
Sorry, I figured it out. It's overtime.
Is it?
It's the two overtime line items, because that wouldn't be reflected up on top. The sixty-seven hundred and the thirty thousand.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
That was a test, people, try to keep up.
That was the problem, so in my, in my spreadsheet, I have estimates of normal overtime per person. It's factored into those two accounts that we've always had. And then in this new formula, it's separated out for overtime.
That's the part I kind of struggled with, like, understanding how it was delta to two years of overtime wages. That's buried in people's salaries.
And you're, and you're probably one of the only budgets with PD would have it too, that actually has overtime.
Scott, can you go back?
I think you're still, shouldn't you be backing the one-seventy-three of winter wages at the regular salaries?
Something's different there.
In winter wages, Randall, some of that in salary?
In winter wages, yeah, it's not all overtime. So basically, this is how I calculate it. I've got it here, I've got all the guys' wage rates, and then what it costs for thirty-three weeks of general highway. I defend twenty hours of overtime per person on a separate spreadsheet. And then over here is nineteen hours of winter wages at those wage rates, and a defendable ninety hours per person overtime. So all, I can pull out all of the numbers, but it still doesn't include mine and my office manager's lines up there, the first two lines. Because those were, I've got her down here as a separate line, but mine has never been something that I've had control over, so it's just in the budget, whatever is negotiated.
I should know this the second year through, but the winter wages have certain reimbursement mechanisms.
Yes, both, both expense and wages, and we have some people who know this at verbiage more than I do, but we can overspend them upon select board declaration of winter emergency. Which we're approaching, by the way.
Well, it's almost...
First of all, meteorologist, spring, you know, we're going to go on Saturday. I was telling you now.
You already did with winter, we've gone over.
You're basically going over on both, according to.
So these figures are not quite correct, then, is that right?
They are, it's just overtime, because overtime would not be up and the established wages up top. Top is just a straight forty, down the bottom, he's got two lines of overtime.
Overtime should equal...
Right, the six and the thirty, the thirty-six, that's the difference between the six and the nine.
It should equal thirty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents.
Up top is just the base salary for everything, yeah.
What's the difference between winter wages, overtime, and winter overtime?
Winter wages is just the forty hours a week for fourteen, or nineteen weeks.
For people who are not normally employed the rest of the year.
Incorrect.
Existing staff.
It's for my regular employees.
Yeah, but they're forty hours, right?
Yeah, right. So thirty-three weeks, thirty-three weeks out of the year, it's up top.
It's time of year. Yeah, we're, we're, this is a round peg, and we're shoving it in a square hole.
Interesting, yeah. Yeah, so it's a separate, separate, you know, allocation, if you will, for winter time.
I will, I will have it broken out next year in a better fashion. I just love this, I've been using it for years.
But, yeah, I think this is clear, though, I see where you're coming up with the, on the overtime there, yeah.
And I've got historical data to show what we've spent during the winter, going back to FY twenty-two, average overtime per person, which defends my overtime estimates. Because, because everything is an estimate, is if you can tell me how many storms we're going to have, the price of commodities, I'll say what I'll spend next year.
So right now, just to be clear, that, that winter wages stuff, it comes for twenty, twenty weeks of the year, is that right?
Nineteen. Teen, I believe.
It depends if you see the shadow or not.
Okay. All right, want to go on operating expenses bit?
We're on operating?
Yeah.
Where do you want to start, John, the highway?
Sure.
Okay, so most of the, most of the expenses were fairly similar from what I requested last year. We did, John, you're going to have to remind me how we did the whole winter thing, because we had put a placeholder, you guys didn't want to increase...
Yep.
The winter wages because of the mechanism where you...
Right, so we left it in one of the other line items.
Yep.
So you can do a transfer, in my opinion.
I had put in my budget that it was seventy-five thousand, but that is suggesting it's only about forty thousand. And I don't know what the number was, where we ended up last year. Of how much you guys put in, is in here, I'm calling it in here, Marty.
I don't remember either.
Yeah, because here you want to go up winter roads.
Yes, because I'm always going to suggest that, because we, you know, you have an average cost for what it costs you in the wintertime. I'm always going to advocate for that, because if you keep it the same, you keep my funding the same, and commodity costs go up and wages go up, the delta becomes bigger and bigger, and it looks like every year I'm managing my budget worse.
So I think as we, as we put it in one line item, it allowed you the flexibility to transfer funds out, wasn't it?
And it didn't, it didn't penalize us, because once we put it in, we can never take it out. Well, you can take it out, but then you're not allowed to deficit spend the next three years.
Right. So however you want to make the sausage at the end of the day, I'm always going to advocate for it being what I think it's going to cost me next year, or my year response.
Right, so my, my, all right, so that, that's why you, you're reducing general highway by thirty-eight, but I'm assuming leaving the two oh-three in there will allow you sufficient money to do everything that's over in that explanation that you think you need to do next year?
Yes, and I can list that out if you want to go through.
I trust you, if you, I mean, I do, I don't know about everybody else.
Listen, we all know how my budget goes, right? You have things you want to do, but at the end of the year, if my budget doesn't support it, I have to cut investment in infrastructure.
Right.
For example, in previous years, I've been asked to cover the winter deficit from general highway.
Right.
So then you're not investing in roads.
Do I have some budget question? I think you want to touch on this, John. So if you wanted to spend money in your winter road expenses, but you, say you're under that one, but you're over there in your, your general highway, you have the discretion at your level to move things around within this lines?
No, I have to...
He can go into deficit spend, right? And then, then it's on us to determine where the, where the shortfall money is going to come from. The first place we'll look is, do you have any money within your existing budget? And whether it's that, or unfortunately, traditionally, he's been four people short year over year, so there's money there as well.
So there's money in wages to cover that.
But if he, if he spent every dime he had and was in deficit, then it's on the select board to figure out what other departments are getting cut to come over that money.
Well, within his budgets, if he overspent on general highway, but underspent on winter roads, could he, in his discretion, move around money within that?
He couldn't do it without approval.
But what the situation you're describing happens every single year.
So why don't you just make one, call it general highway, and put all of them in?
Because that's nobody's fault.
Because under, well, also under, under the MGL, there's two, the winter roads, there's two lines, and they have to be coven that way. Those are the only lines you can deficit spend. And the select board has to declare an emergency or declaration or whatever annually.
Yeah, but I guess, I'm looking at the granularity of the other things, and I guess, you guys come back and ask for pluses and minuses. That's up to you guys, your comfort level.
Yeah, it happens every year, we make it work.
Okay, okay.
I do think having separate, like, I've got the separate categories, general highway, machinery maintenance, it does give the public some sort of transparency on where the money goes.
Right, because if we have extremely bad winter, or a lot of ice, the taxpayers will understand why that, why there's such a big deficit there. If we didn't have a single snowstorm or a single salting event, why did you overspend?
Sure, yeah, sure, sure. But for example, if I, if I end up spending, machinery maintenance has been one that's just gone, changing equipment has just gone through the roof, mechanical costs. I go through the expense reports when I'm preparing my next budget, and I will pick out all of the, like, if I had to pay for them, the general highway, I will pick those out of general highway and put them into the account they should be in. So the numbers I provide you are what it costs for those particular line items.
I guess, I don't know, I mean, I'll say this, and then I'll listen to what Bradley has to say, if I'm way off track here. But would it be beneficial if we collectively still didn't just want to true up winter road expenses? Could we add another line item, a description, a miscellaneous expense line item, that we knew this is what that was, and we put the money there, versus burying it in machinery maintenance or something?
Oh, so you have a dedicated line item for like...
Miscellaneous emergencies.
That would help me, because then I don't have to explain every year why I took money out on earmark.
Right.
Well, you should, still should be able to transfer between these accounts, for the major ones.
Oh, sure.
Into, okay.
Yeah, but I'm thinking, like, if I'm putting in next year...
Trying to tell you guys every year what the, what the winter was. None of us can remember what we put into the general highway for the earmark last year.
But if we, if we moved that sixty-eight thousand into machinery maintenance, right? So he's asking for us to put winter roads at sixty-eight grand. If we add the sixty-eight to the thirty-eight, right, we're really over inflating that maintenance, machinery maintenance line item, so when future people are looking at it, it's like, well, wait a minute. You're telling me you have broken down equipment and you have issues here, but you left a hundred thousand dollars on the table?
I like this idea of a separate line item that says winter, whatever.
Can you, can you think of any reason why we can't have a miscellaneous line item under expenses?
You just, you're saying you don't want to increase the winter road expenses and wages, so you can't...
But we want to leave the money in his budget, so he has discretion.
So it's still in the budget the same way as just increasing the, those two wage and expense lines. But if you want to keep an emergency, and then if we don't need it, it flows back into the general fund.
Right, it will follow in its free cash at the end of the year.
So you'd take it out of the one-ninety figure, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, like, if, if he requested one-twenty-two, even go back to actual twenty-four, spend was one-forty-seven. I mean, I could, I can see, I could make a logic, we should add ten thousand dollars to it. We should bring it up a little bit, but not necessarily the full sixty-eight thousand. Because again, once we hit that one-ninety, we can never go back down.
Right.
But we can leave it within his budget, so...
So miscellaneous sounds like not included above. And I think what this sounds like to me is more like a contingency fund.
Yeah, it's possible that the highway department could have a reserve fund. You know, similar to.
Whatever words we have to dance around, yeah.
Because that, that, all winter roads expenses has been funded at a hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred dollars. And going back, I'll go backwards in time from last year, that was my request, so FY twenty-four, actual.
One forty-seven.
One thirty, I have one thirty-eight, but I, I move stuff in my budget to where it needs to go. One twenty-six, the year before, one oh seven.
Well, remember, twenty-three and twenty-four here are the actual spends. Those aren't your budget columns, twenty-three and twenty-four. That's what you really spent in those line items.
Well, that's what, that's what Bradley's office says I really spent on. I go through the.
He's town accountant, that's who we go by. It's his signature on the bottom of that form.
I have slightly different numbers because I pour through my condition of accounts and move stuff where it was supposed to go.
But what, what does finance think?
I'm okay with that. I think you need to be careful of the description, so it doesn't get
Yes.
locked in with winter road expense, because then you're locking yourself into the same thing you were trying to avoid in the first place.
Yeah, so just throwing it out there, you know, leaving, you know, bumping that up by ten grand, or maybe even thirteen, bring it to one twenty-five, and then move the balance of that into another line item that still falls under the highway department with constructive descriptions.
And it could be created, you could create accounts in such a way that we wouldn't be able to touch that until we expanded the other ones, right? I mean, you could put guardrails on it.
Well, you have to remember.
I think the only way to do that is it'd have to be outs, it'd have to be like a capital account within the department.
Stabilization account somewhere else.
Yeah.
That we would need to go town meeting to pull money out of it.
That's getting a little messy.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a little bit too complicated.
You have to be very specific in the wording of the goal name.
The goal is to put it in his discretion.
Yeah. General highway building expenses?
Within the understanding.
Yes, that it, it is once this is, these funds are expended.
So Johnny, you're saying instead of that sixty-four on the side there, bump, bump that down a little bit to maybe sixty thousand or something to move aside?
Well, he's, he's, he's budgeted, the current budget's one twenty-two.
Right.
So bring it up to one thirty-five or something like that.
Right. Then the difference there come down into a separate line-ish.
Right. Yeah, so forty, forty-six, something like that.
Other, there was sixty-eight, yeah. Something's not computing.
He said one thirty-five?
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
So you're saying this would be like a contingency for winter road expenses without putting it in winter road expenses?
Right, so leave it in the highway department. So at the end of winter season, when's winter road season in?
April.
April. So then that means he'll know May, June, or July if he's gonna need that money or not. And if he doesn't, he can look for the next disaster on his list that needs to be taken care of, per se. I mean, I.
If you're not gonna spend it on winter roads, I would think that would go back into free cash.
Well, it could, but say all of a sudden you have a gas tank that's leaking now, that needs to be repaired, and you've exhausted all your other areas, that would potentially be a source.
As long as that's okay, I, I can find things, projects.
But it would leave your budget flat year over year.
You guys be okay with that. I'm asking for it for winter.
Right, but again, I think if we describe it as relating to winter expenses, I think it basically will lock us in. The combined amounts will be.
Understood, okay.
Because that leaves it, that leaves it, sorry, that leaves it within your budget. The flip side of it is, if we didn't want to leave it within your budget, we could take that dollar amount and increase the reserve fund at finance, so you'd have to go back and justify why you're pulling this money over, which finance would ask you, did you overspend your winter roads, because that's the first place this money's going. It just brings up a layer of protection.
However, however y'all are comfortable doing it, I just, I, I, I don't want to be taking deficit spending out of the town's infrastructure.
Correct.
That's a poor, that's a poor financial move. We under.
I think if we were to pull that out, we'd really gotta describe what that, what that is, and what, how it can be used, though.
Yeah, because last, last year, for all intents and purposes, we buried it on a line item. Right, and this is what happens. It doesn't get spent, so as you go down, well, wait a minute, you're not spending that, so you get a real lean time.
Yeah.
You never spend this fifty-five thousand, so we're gonna cut it.
So therefore you don't need it, right, right?
Right.
So this would preserve it a bit, at least through the end of the fiscal year, but then it's gonna go either the general fund or somewhere.
It would, it would fall out to free cash.
Yeah, free cash.
But in reality, if it's budgeted, there's, there aren't guardrails on it.
That's what I'm saying, if you wanted a layer of protection, we would make it part of the reserve fund calculation. Right now, you guys have a thirty thousand dollar reserve fund, we would add another fifty in there, and it would just have to be documented somewhere that that's how we came up with this number as part of the budget, which could be a footnote in the budget under the reserve fund, thirty thousand for general discussion, fifty thousand first for winter roads.
That would be the easiest way to be able to access something if you needed it, I think, right?
That's the goal.
That would be, you know, a request with, with the finance committee to.
Because not doing that, right, and again, you set a reserve fund up, you feel the, the pain the first year. Because the second year, if you don't use it, it just falls out to free cash and comes back in.
Yeah.
Right, it's when you use it, you feel the pain to readjust that. So the, there was a point there I was gonna make. It, it just starts, it basically becomes a savings account that closes out, closes out every year in free cash that creates a record.
If you don't use it, but.
If you don't use it.
Honestly, we've had some pretty easy winters the last five, and
Yeah.
Yeah.
This one is not even that horrible.
But take the people out of it. I mean, at some point in thirty years, you're not gonna be the highway supervisor.
Sure, sure.
So we need to put the guardrails in now for the position, not the person. Now, you just gotta keep finance fully staffed, so you can get them home.
But it does sound like the, you know, the easiest way to be able to manage that would be to put it in the reserve fund, rather than putting in some other.
Yeah, like with a footnote on the calculation. So again, future bodies can look at that and say, why did we go from thirty to eighty? Oh, it's because here it is. I strode out there, I mean.
Yes, good idea. Okay. Well, we won't necessarily decide it tonight, but it's a good idea to keep it in our heads as we move forward on our funnel, looking at things.
Because with the exception of that, the rest of the budget's neutral, as far as expenses go.
Reserve fund.
Yeah, so I usually ask for the underinvestment in infrastructure. I usually ask for more money there, but the state has given us a supplement this year, so I didn't, I didn't ask for it.
Is it going towards that bridge?
In May.
And what's our share? Because that's what you didn't put in that email. What do you anticipate our share of that?
That's because that's kind of higher level than me. Nobody knows what the ownership of those bridges. I mean, I can tell you and.
Who plows it?
One hundred percent East Hampton. One hundred percent East Hampton.
I think we, we own a lot of it.
You say we own a lot of it, he says we own none of it.
Well, no, we, I, I've talked to East Hampton, and the suggestion is that maybe we, we go fifty-fifty, but I don't think that's a Greg and Randall discussion, that's a city council and select board.
Where's the problem, I mean?
Yeah, so this, this is the bridge up on, where, Pommeroy Meadow Road, it's got a problem that needs to be dealt with. Yeah.
Yeah. And we have another potential, same construction, same vintage, downhill from the winery on.
Oh, that bridge?
A third on, which we own completely, Gun Road. They're all same construction, wooden piers.
Yikes.
Okay, so do you want other good news?
Uh, sure.
So on capital, I have not, got my capital done yet. We're, we're kind of drowning in highway. But I can just tell you that in preference, there's an omnibus truck bill and a carb regulation. I don't know if anybody's heard of them, but they have put in exemptions for police, fire, and arborists, for some reason, that they can continue to purchase diesel vehicles. Everybody else is supposed to purchase electric vehicles. However, the technology does not even yet exist for plow vehicles. The state of Commonwealth, Massachusetts, has put off the mandate for two years, so we have two years to buy diesel trucks, and I would suggest we do so. We have two single axle dump trucks that are, we're dumping more and more money in. They're gonna be my top ask, just because of that looming deadline. We are looking for roadside mower. That's, I don't know if anybody's seen it, it's a big green tractor with a big mower that comes off. It's got a lot of torque on it, and the arm has fallen off before. It's at the end of its useful life for that purpose, but I would like to reuse it. I would like to buy a new roadside mower and use the old tractor and put a brush hog mower on to maintain some of the open space parcels that we're acquiring that we can mow fields with. Those are the kind of top priorities. We also improved money for heating system upgrade for the highway department. It was insufficient once we started getting estimates in, so we've had a design, and we're gonna need a supplement for that money to replace the heating system. That's also a high priority. Lower priorities, and some of them may be able to be accomplished through missing funds in my budget. We have eleven humongous garage doors on the highway department. They all need some TLC, some of them need replacement parts. I had somebody in looking at them yesterday. I haven't got a estimate yet. Our salt shed out back has high-pressure metal halide lights in it. A number of them have been going out. I would like to upgrade them to something more efficient anyway, some LEDs, so we, when we're in there, those lights are on for twenty-four hours a day.
How come we didn't include that in the, in the green communities originally?
People ask me to be part of the green community.
No, I'm just wondering, because we did library, police, and hall.
I did my own facility, but we did the interior. Those were a little above, again, I had give the rest of the facilities comfort level. But I get everything else, my whole other, the rest of the facility has been upgraded to LEDs.
Okay.
I leveraged funds for that, and I think we've been saving some money on that. We're looking for a new box truck. It's like our mobile tool box when the guys have to go out and do stuff. Our current one is two thousand. Is it nineteen ninety-nine? It's a more rusted truck right now.
So right now, the first one you said were two dump trucks, is that?
Two single axle CDL-level dump trucks, plow truck with, you know, integrated sander in it.
Is the only reason for that need the state mandate of electric vehicles?
No, they should be replaced, but, you know, instead of trying to replace one and then, you know, going for another one in a couple of years, I think it makes sense to go for them now, rather than be stuck not being able to get trucks, because then, then where do we go? Like, they haven't, they haven't made the trucks yet that would be able to be run by batteries that would plow and sand roads.
So they haven't made those in exception? I mean, if you've got fire in place, it already.
Fire, police, and arborists, figure that out.
Just reclassify your department.
Yeah, you would be arborist.
Make everybody an arborist.
Yeah, I would suspect that they're going to have to make an exemption, but this is gonna be my recommendation with the, the information I have right now.
Yeah.
You wouldn't be able to, you know, have enough stock to provide all cities and towns in Massachusetts for those.
But not.
They wouldn't have enough, even if they were starting to produce them this year, they wouldn't have enough.
Yeah.
Stock for everyone.
And it makes sense. But either way, those vehicles are getting up for the plan.
Yeah, I mean, one of them is around two thousand five.
All right.
So twenty years old on a, on a piece of public safety equipment that usually has a twelve year useful life. The other one is a two thousand and seven, so right behind it.
So it's capital, it's capital, it's budget.
Yeah, well, I'm hoping to maybe, I don't know, is capital, free cash been certified? Anyway, so that's all the good news.
No, but it's.
But I want to let you all know what's coming.
Free cash? Yeah, so you're only targeting a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, round numbers, that's gonna be available for capital.
Well, we have the three fifty.
That's not a lot, John.
I know, no, Randall, I know.
All right.
I'm on the capital command.
But you've got something much.
Three hundred K for each of those. Yeah, currently it's three fifty.
Hundred fifty for the runoff.
So on top of.
And I'm sure it's being invested and earning ten, eleven percent interest.
And then we've got the hundred and twenty-ish, maybe as an estimate this year, or three?
Half a million, well, we, so do we buy the ambulance or the diesel truck?
Good question.
I see.
Yes, okay. Other thoughts, questions? Yeah, other stuff?
Yeah, anything else that I can explain?
I think you talked about a little bit of supplement on the chapter ninety money, did you know?
Yes, we have, well, I don't know if everyone knows, we get about three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars a year in chapter ninety funds. That is programmed for infrastructure improvements. I try to develop a work plan sometimes, like last year, I saved up a couple of years of appropriation to try to leverage a better price by doing more roads. We did eleven roads last year of, of level mill and fill, we call it, milling and then level overlay. This year, we, so we've got the three hundred fourteen thousand plus, I believe it's a hundred and nineteen thousand supplement. I put it into the narrative, but I'm having trouble reading. I have a bigger screen in my office, and my eyes are old. But we don't know, yes, the rural roads is up.
Hundred nineteen?
Hundred and ninety, yeah.
So we don't yet know the cost of that bridge, so while I'm gonna put in a work plan, my Franklin Cog estimates have to be in this Friday. I'm gonna put in a work plan that we're gonna do, you know, a couple of roads, but that may not get done depending on how much the repair to the bridge costs. We are allowed to use chapter ninety funds, and I believe the rural road supplement as well for that. But right now, I have no, I don't even have a wild guess of what.
Is the bridge currently restricted? The, the barriers up?
Greg, the DPW director in East Hampton is helping us out with that. He's ordered the.
They're not up yet.
Not, I came over yesterday to get it. But this was kind of dumped on us right before a couple of snowstorms, so good times.
Who dumped this on us?
The Massachusetts Department of Transportation.
The bridge inspection people.
So I guess they had, they have a consulting firm taking a closer look at existing bridge inspection reports. So this bridge was inspected, I believe, in two, twenty-two, and now.
Will they do just a flyover?
They scrutiny.
The report you shared today was much better and thorough than the initial one that we got, that just had the diagram atop. Didn't have the pictures underneath. And I wasn't going under there to look, so.
Yeah, exactly. I just have one last question.
Sure.
It's on your last part of your narrative. Is, just to, just to understand a little bit more about this pavement management plan?
Yes.
With PBPC that was done in two thousand eighteen, was the last?
That was the last update. It's, it's sort of a document that becomes outdated the minute it's produced. It's, it's, it's good for that year. So I use it as a general, what it will do is it, it's a snapshot in time. They, PBPC rides around and evaluates the roads, and they give them a subjective score. It's called an OCI, overall condition index or something. So they'll give them an empirical score. They will then recommend different pavement preservation techniques for different segments of road. I will utilize that, but I also utilize my knowledge of the roads, the volume of the roads. Like, I might, there might be a road with a higher OCI but a higher volume of traffic, like Pomeroy Meadow Road. That you, you have to keep that road in pristine condition because it's got so much volume over it, where, you know, you might see some side streets get a little, in a little more poor condition, but they're, they're, they're servicing the people that live on those side streets. I do try to balance it out. For example, like, it's a pavement preservation technique called microseal that we've never tried before on, I forget how many streets off of Pomeroy Meadow Road, but we try to take care of some of those side streets with a more cost-effective pavement preservation technique. technique. It's, it seemed, the salesman was really, he brought some really good data, but it's a technique that we'd never tried before, so we tried it out.
Yeah, and I guess my question is, so does the money to do that, is that all out of your Chapter 90 money as well, or is that...
Yes, we fund very little. The general highway doesn't have a lot in it for, I mean, we might, there are certain expenses that Chapter 90 won't cover, or I wasn't able to bid them out, because they're very strict guidelines on how you can use the Chapter 90 money. Everything has to be bid out, follow procurement laws, there are some, it has to be over 500 feet of pavement, very regimented. So there are sometimes situations, say I forgot to put road striping, repainting the traffic lines on the Franklin Cog estimates, so they never got bid out, then I would pay for those out of general highway, because I wouldn't be allowed to use Chapter 90.
Right, okay.
But for the most part, Chapter 90 goes directly to roads, and that's pretty much all we put into it.
So make an observation similar to John's about the fire department equipment.
Sure.
We had several million dollars of kind of deferred maintenance on the roads, and we're getting 500 or so thousand of the Chapter 90 and the rural roads a year. So if we look ahead without really allocating town fund supports that, like, where are the roads going to be like in 10 years from now? Do we have several million dollars like waiting to crash, or...
I think the state and federal government are both recognizing the scale of the problem. I'm a member of the Tri-City Highways and Bridge Owners Association, and we've gone to Boston to talk to regulators about, you know, we need more funds, more investment into question. I think they're listening, because we've got that rural roads supplement. We had another supplement last year, I'm blanking on the name of this, but it was another 119,000, and I think did all those side streets off Pomeroy Meadow with that allotment. So I think the message is getting through that we're getting more, say, to federal funds, but yes, equipment and commodities, asphalt is not getting any cheaper, so it's going to have to come from somewhere, but we're doing our best to do right by our residents and apply them where we can.
There is, have to hope that, yeah, that Boston and everyone else starts to pick up the slack.
Yeah, but I mean, it seems like no matter what industry you talk to, there's that looming, what are we going to do? You kind of have to, if everybody's in the same boat, it's not a compelling argument that mine is any more, you know, drastic than anybody else's.
Got it. Okay, any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Yeah, any questions come up, I prepared all these beautiful spreadsheets. If anybody ever wants to see them, I'd be more than happy to share them.
Hold on to them for seven years.
And we'll deal with the transfer station separately later on.
Sure.
That one's a little easier.
Yeah.
Only slightly.
Sounds good.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, water department, Brett.
Brett.
Hey, Brett.
Glad you made it.
Yeah.
Doug, hello. Nice to meet you.
I've met him.
So there's just a couple of things with the water department. This is our first enterprise fund of the year, so for those at home, enterprise funds are a little bit different. They're self-sustaining based on the fees and the bills that you get. So when you look at town meeting, it's actually going to be a separate vote for their budget, so it's kind of a little bit independent. And then one of the other things that we're working on this year is revising all of our indirect costs, so we're still working on it. We're slowly getting into the percentages, using the best practices provided by the state. So hopefully in a week or two, we're going to be able to get a more accurate cost on that.
I think it's going down from what?
Probably, I wouldn't say that yet. So for personnel expenses, we have four positions right now, two are filled, and then we have the administrative assistant, which is the shared position between highway, transfer station, and water department. Sorry, for some reason, the scales change whenever I go on the computer. On top of that, we have the overtime for the department and as well as highway support wages, so obviously we have an agreement with the highway department, when there's a water main break or they need construction, the enterprise fund will pay money to the highway department for that. For operating expenses, there hasn't been much changes. The indirect costs we're working on right now, generally we've just used one number over the last couple of years, but we're going to kind of go into a little bit more detail with that.
Was there nothing in fiscal year '24?
I think we just forgot to put it in.
Okay.
The number is still the same, 157,99, but it had to be...
'24, we never had an actual indirect cost, like we budgeted an amount, but we never calculated it.
These poor fiscal year '24s, close in the books, and these to be rectified, true to whatever accounting terms.
So.
I think it's elevated about 40, 50 grand, maybe, based on positions that we're not filled.
See, I'm your ghost from earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
So we had a little incident where we were both editing it at the same time. So just like always says Stephen Johnson.
Stephen's in there looking at a notice, he won't say his change.
Put a number in there, you change it.
I kept changing it back, so.
I'm not editing, but I am in there.
Okay. Yeah, so you want to go through operating expenses, Brett, or where would you like to go?
Tell me, it's my first time here.
Yeah, yeah. Whatever you'd like us to know. So operating may be the easiest way to go, start with that, see if we have questions?
Are you looking for breakdown detail, please?
I mean, I look at it, it looks like a very specific number, so that's probably pulling up with some more...
Yeah, I don't think we got a narrative from you, Brett, so that's why I'm asking. I don't think we have a budget narrative.
Operating expenses includes everything from Neptune, our billing software, annual accounts, billing, maintenance, communication, education, travel, association for the water department, electrical for all our buildings, fuel for vehicles, generator maintenance, we have a generator at Booster Station, propane for that generator, miscellaneous office stuff to be supplied, copier leases, posters for the year. Purchased water would be one of our bigger numbers in all that, which is emergencies and supplemental from purchased water from East Hampton. The other large one in the operating would be the electrical. In the past, it's been as high as $30,000 for the year, and we have budgeted about 50.
And that's for the well primarily, or...
Yeah, well, and then the other outbuildings, we have outbuilding control room at the tank that has electric heat. And then we have an old coronation station on Gilbert Road, which also has water in there, so we have to heat that. So they, and they're old, just concrete block buildings that, back when they were built in the 70s, there was no insulation, no efficiencies or anything. I mean, I'm looking to, potentially ran out of time this year, I wanted to spray foam one of our small control room building at the tank, $500 investment, a little bit of our labor, probably save hundreds a month.
So Brett, can I back up, because I don't really understand how this works, but you've got the well, is that on Pomeroy Meadow Road?
No, it's on College Highway.
It's on College Highway.
57th, just passed.
Where we were the other day.
Corner of Glendale Road.
We walked down there, cutting bases, just went in now.
Well, Brian, go back.
Where all the water comes from for the town?
Yes, it is our single solitary well called Glendale O2.
Why would you need to buy water from the city?
Yeah, well, got to explain that.
Because our infrastructure is reaching the maximum capacity of our pumping permits. We are allowed 700, I'm sorry, yeah, we're allowed 550 gallons a minute to pump out of that Barnes Outward from that Glendale well O2 per year. And our pumping data, that thing runs 550 gallons a minute for 24 hours straight, and in the past, our drought years, things run for three days straight, and that is our maximum permitted capacity that we're allowed to take out of the Barnes Outward.
And it's not because there's not enough water there, that's just the max you can take?
That's the maximum.
So then you have to go and buy it from somewhere else.
And that's usually when we've declared a drought, or drought has been declared, right?
Theoretically, you should be using less water when there's a drought, and all these people with the green law...
No, but that's when you have to go buy it. I mean, right now, this year, there was no drought.
There's no drought restrictions. It's going to be coming, and that's going to be another learning curve for me too, because we're going to make sure we have town bylaws that we can enforce.
Does that cut down on the permitted amount if there's a state drought declaration, so you're still at...
We're purchasing water from East Hampton.
Okay.
But ultimately, it's just a customer.
Which then means we follow East Hampton's drought, so Southampton may not be in a drought, but because we're purchasing.
Because we're purchasing, we have to.
We, right now, we're both on the same river gauge, which is a, which is going to change, it's going to get difficult in the next couple of years, because we're, right now, we're permitted, but not, we're registered but not permitted, DEP language that I'm still trying to overcome. And about 2026, 2027, our permit has expired in 2014, it has nothing to do with us, because it's the state being behind rewriting all these permits, so there's going to be language in there that will very specifically make sure that we have town bylaws that are enforceable to enforce...
Water restrictions.
Water restrictions, correct.
Is this water management permit or a different law permit?
I'm not sure what the title exactly. I think it's a...
Governance year.
It's not our source water permit, it's a separate withdrawal permit.
Withdrawal permit.
So just to be clear, so we buy water from East Hampton not only when it's in a drought situation?
No, that has nothing to do with a drought.
Just we reach capacity.
When our system and our residents are using more than our well can produce at 550 gallons a minute, comes out to 700, 2,000 gallons a year.
We could take out 700, but we're only allowed to take five.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that has been totally understood. I think people think that we buy water, you know, because there's a drought in the summertime, and we're out of what we can do, and we need to buy water from East Hampton or something.
And we've just exceeded the capacity.
We exceeded our distribution system, our...
Our permit.
Infrastructure of our town, our residents has exceeded that well capacity.
But yet, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, what percentage of our residents actually draw from the town versus their own private wells?
Kind of an uncertain number, I mean, we have, what, 6,900 residents, I think the town website says.
62.
62.
Dwellings.
But right.
It's not dwellings, no, those are residents.
No, we have 1,658 service counts.
Okay.
And if you go according to the DEP and your annual statistical report, it's 2.5 people per dwelling.
Right.
Which doesn't exactly math up from the annual statistical reports that I've, that were in the past, and I produced my first one last year of being here, but I didn't understand, never, I backed up a little bit. I interviewed two hours after the old superintendent retired, so I've never met him. So I was handed a password for the building via text message. My desk is the one on the left, good luck, password's in the drawer, so a lot of stuff is, is how much time to like sit and stare and dig through files on a computer.
Good succession planning there, I guess.
Yeah. So a lot of this information, I didn't have a copy of our permitted thing when the drought declaration came out. This summer, for other municipalities, I started to kind of panic, didn't have a copy of that permit, wrote back to the girl with, for Boston, and said, can you give me a little more detail? She said, oh, I'm sorry, it was a, the language isn't in your permit. And I said, can I get a copy of that? So nothing else came out of it, I got a copy of the permit in my building now, that was never, that I never had.
So have we had, since you've been on, have we had to buy water then?
Oh, yeah, we have, yeah. So there's, and so now getting to know the system a little bit more, we start to adjust pump schedules, and a lot of it is actually, it's not, it always seems to fall into a cycle of shutting off, our biggest demand starts at 5:30 in the morning, people getting up and then sprinklers. And so it's a little bit of not allowing that tank to be empty at 5:30, or, you know, not empty, but, you know, at the turn on at 12, 12 or 12:06, whatever, we have summer and winter on and off. But if it's at 12:06, at 4:30 in the morning and then off, we use more than 550 gallons a minute, and so that tank starts continually dropping, so it's a little bit of managing it on a daily basis of saying, you know, make sure the tanks, we try to adjust the numbers on a daily basis, sometimes at night I can do it remotely, that I know the tanks are going to be on and running and close to full at 5:00 in the morning, so that we can overcome that 4:30 to 9:00 peak demand. And then, but if the tank hits 11:00 to 9:00 right now, we buy water. We had a main break on December 3rd, we bought quarter million gallons of water.
What does it cost for a quarter million gallons?
You pay, we got a slight break from East Hampton, it's $3.61, that's per 100 cubic feet, so 100 cubic feet is 748 gallons, so.
Not that fast.
It's like 0.04, you know, I mean, it's relatively cheap. I mean, if you all think about it, walk down the island, Big Lion, look at a gallon of milk, or a gallon of water, I'm sorry, pulling springs, you're $2, you don't, dollar a unit for a gallon, unit price, you're getting 12,000 gallons of water, 10,000 gallons in your water in your house for 63 bucks.
Am I missing something? Because I don't think I've heard an effort to advise town residents to shorten their showers, get low-water toilets, stop using sprinkler systems in the middle of rainstorms.
If you're on the water system, you get your water bill quarterly.
Yeah.
And if it's less than a dollar a day, I got 1,001 things to worry about with three kids, and that's not going to be one of them.
But he's describing this aggregate problem, you know, of that 5:30 till 9:00 in the morning.
It doesn't sound like a problem, it sounds like a regulation problem.
Need a bigger tank.
Well, it's a regulation problem, but it's happening then. We can say that people don't take a shower until 11:00 AM, you know, or something like that.
It's not going to work.
People are selfish, and they're going to go doing what they need to do. They don't, there's people with $4,000.
Are there solutions to the issue? I mean, expanding the capacity or getting water, I mean, do we have a contract with East Hampton?
Yeah, we have a 20-year contract, probably four years into a 20-year contract, protected, right?
Get as much water as we want?
Yep. Yep, they're water rich.
And then what's entailed, so I guess one clarification, it's, that's point in time, the 550 yard limit, so it's not average over 24 hours?
Right.
So it's not like we can max out the pumps?
Okay, 550 gallons a minute times 24 hours, making 732,000 gallons.
Bigger tank.
So you need more storage.
We do need a bigger tank, that tank, I mean, that was installed in 1986.
Right, and what was there? We were probably 4,000 people in town instead of 6,700.
What's the capacity of it?
744,000 gallons.
550 times 24.
And then how does that relate to the water tower on Mokop Mountain?
That is the one, that is the tank.
Oh, that's the tank, okay, I thought you meant the well, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
And then the permit itself, what's entailed with going for a greater, like, draw capacity under the permit? Like, does that push us into a new water system?
Probably, maybe a five-year process, maybe lawyer and engineering company.
Is that Mass Water Works or Mass DEP?
Well, it's got to go through DEP, the state, and the down switch, I wouldn't even know where to start, I've never done it, so. It was put in in 2001.
So is the cost of buying water from East Hampton, is it break even for the water department, or is it putting us in deficit spending?
I think it's right around the same, just close to the same price, I don't know, we've actually did the map, but I don't remember up here.
That's a 20-year.
It's like 0.04, it's like, yeah, I was 0.06.
But you need to cover all your costs, or you're just going to build it out eventually.
Right, everything is billed to the ratepayers. You know, they're not taxpayers, they're the ratepayers. And absolutely, there are a lot of infrastructure things that have gone unintended to a level.
So that was going to be my question on the budget. So first, the capital 50,000, is that, you're appropriating it this year to be used over time, or that's this year's projects to do?
It's a carryover number that has been in there for emergencies.
So is it built, does it build?
Is it built?
Does it build, so 50,000, you don't use it this year, next year for another 50, you don't use that, now you have 100.
All our money stays in the enterprise fund, so it doesn't go, it's not like, it's not like it's the end of the year, and we go, hey, we're going to go buy 6,000.
Right, so I know there's a million dollars worth of projects coming down, right, and your predecessor asked us to fork over half of our ARPA money for the 100-year-old wooden pipes, right, which, we did a portion of it, but... Which we did a portion of it, but.
332,000.
It would stand to reason that the commission should be raising the rates to start building the reserves, whether it's a nickel or something. I mean, the enterprise, much like the transfer station, should support itself and never ask for general fund money.
Right. There's going to be a.
Is there active?
Awakening come June again. When I first got here, June of 2023 was a 9% hike. And last June, June 24th was a 3% hike. But I think we're, it's open for big discussion.
Because that's also a way to curb water usage.
Well, we did, we raised, we raised rates, so we had, we have three different tiers. Zero to 12,000 gallons was the old rate. It was June of 20, it just changed to June of 2024 was our first billing cycle. Old billing cycle was 6175 for 12,000 gallons. So you could use one gallon, 11,999, and you would get charged 63, 6175 plus the 8,000 meter fee, which is in a separate account. We raised the rates by 3%, rounded the numbers up just so the tax collectors wouldn't have to be doing pennies. So it's 6375 and we lowered the tier consumption from 12,000 gallons to 10,000 gallons to essentially kind of start to curb, and we, you know, call them water pigs and all that, to stop, to start.
Yeah.
Getting people to realize, hey, your water bills, you know, hit people in the pockets. And soon as that, and it went hit, right on our biggest quarterly billing cycle. So we had, I say I probably had about 15, 18 people. $700 on our water bill was every year, every quarter, you know. Coming this time, June, when we rolled tier consumptions and the rates went up to 0, 10 was 6375. Then we dropped the next tier from 12,000 to 24, down to 20. So $900, people started calling. So I was in a lot of people's basements and a lot of toilet test packs and saying, here's your last five years' bills, you definitely used 100,000 gallons of water. So I had a lot of, you know, I sat on a lot of people's couches for half an hour trying to explain it.
So did you, did you guys make a conscious decision to do that last year to cover deficits or to build, to build reserves for future projects?
We were, we took out 50,000. We had a bad quarter. It rained pretty good last summer, so one of our quarters was 100,000 dollars below the quarter before, so we make a little revenue estimate. So I would say just about barely breaking even at this point. And so, no, there's not a lot of money.
Because as my memory says, I think the enterprise reserve funds for waters is usually consistently just sitting at 300,000 and never grows. I mean, so that's like your stabilization money. And knowing all these projects coming down the road, that if, you know, if you guys are already taking steps, that's great. And not necessarily you, but I mean, the water commissioners, you know, to put the rates in place so that the reserves are there, so that the, because the argument will be is, I'm on a well, why am I now using my general tax dollars to support the enterprise fund?
With no general tax dollars, it's rate payer, you're the total.
Well, except when you ask us to borrow for you.
Yeah.
Or you take our money, which, which again, it wasn't you, it was your predecessor.
Yeah, it was 332,000. And the remaining 340-somethings is right out of our operating.
Right. Now we're ratepayers, so I don't care if you take it, but, you know.
So one number that I'd like to get in, we kind of waved arms around. We know how many residents, we know how many service folks. But what percentage of citizens are served by the water system?
We say about, I don't know a percentage, but on our annual statistical report anyway, 4,902 people are served.
Two-thirds?
4,902 out of.
6700.
No, I can't believe they're all on wells.
2,000.
We're talking residents, 4,902 residents.
Yep. Are served.
Are served and our population is what, 6200?
6200.
Yep.
I guess maybe around 60% are served, so 40% are paying and managing their own private system, you, me.
Which, which I should add, they're also drawing from the Barnes Aquifer. It's time of drought. People can say, I'm on a well all you want, but the water's still coming from there and eventually it's, if you ever seen that, there will be blood from the oil, you know.
The question really is, how do we ensure that we've got a big enough capital account, stabilization account, to do the critical work that you've identified? And it comes in major increments.
Yeah.
When we've only got 60% of the people benefiting. And what about fire protection for the other 40%?
Yeah.
That's a different conversation, but it is.
That's where you could make an argument for a piece of the general fund to go towards, but it would have to be proportionate and then spelled out. And the fire hydrants would all have to be operational.
If you wanted to extend service to every residence in town.
Which you couldn't.
Which I don't think is right at all.
I mean, no.
Not right at all. So from a planning, long-range planning perspective, you're going to need additional source permitting. You're going to need treatment of unknown quality going forward and, and perhaps a service expansion plan, but not to all town. I'm very passionate about that. I picked out the hilltops for you. I know where the next 100,000 gallons is coming from, but I don't know what it takes to treat it and distribute it. And I just think a 10-year look at this is critical.
Very critical. We have, like I said, our tank is 1996, which is one of the older of the glass line tanks from Aqua Store.
Glass line.
$1.3 million was the last estimate that they got on the 10-year capital plan, depending on which one you find, the one you find in the desk drawer or the one I got from CEI. One has it from 75 grand, not, that doesn't exist, it's 75 grand, but you're marked for it for a plan to figure out, an engineering study to figure out where it's got to go. I mean, we have low water pressure on the north side of town, top of the hill, Valley Road, it barely, you know, it barely gets the ISO standards for fire protection. The next section of water main replacement here.
Right, that's going to be.
Which was initially, was going to be in three different phases. From, so from Fulmer, the first part was the bridge, it got done under hazard litigation, so the state paid for it.
So Fulmer to Clark?
So from Fulmer to Clark was about $681,000 total.
You're talking Route 10.
Route 10.
Yeah, right here, yeah.
And that's replacing, to get a, what was it, 12 inch?
It's a 12-inch, but half the cost comes because the engineers couldn't get the water main out of the street. And so half the cost of the project is just road restoration per mass highway and their permitting and their specifications. So to rebuild that whole lane costs $81,000, I think the project just happened in April 2024.
And that was a third?
Yeah, because you're going to go now from, from Clark to East Street, right? And then East Street to Fulmer Meadow was a plan.
So initially, I had estimates that it was about $678,000 to go from Clark Street or, you know, Conant Park to the front door here.
Yeah.
And that material of COVID, all this stuff, and now we're looking at closer to 978,000. And I really need to get to here based on the water, the quality of the water mains right outside here. We had a water main break in February 2022 right outside the fire department, after hours, so a little bit overtime, highway crew, water guys that were here, it was before my time, but I had to have it repaved. And that patch out here just past the fire department in the southbound lane was nearly $14,000 for a 20 by 20 patch. So anything that happens on this strip is just extremely expensive.
Yeah.
So now, because 10 years ago, the water main does not connect from the front door to Town Hall across here to East Street, they severed it because of the quality of the condition of the 1932 main and the way that that project was left where, so it pretty much dead ends and it was supposed to be a kind of a seamless transition. Multiple things, obviously a regime change over here, state revolving funds, the SRF money is no longer available. It scores really well on the SRF funding because all the money is going to lead service inventory, which is another project we're in the middle of that we're overwhelmed with. But we're hoping that they put more money in it for 2026 or 2025. And we hope that we get $255,000 grant to finish that project we kind of bought because two people were just really not, were just spending on our wheelism.
So getting into East Street, but then you've still got it, you're going to go all the way up to Fulmer Meadow.
Right. And so I was really open to break ground within a couple of months. Had a special town meeting, the last special town meeting was going to try to get an article funded, but it was a lead service, just too much paperwork to get moving. The only source for funding is USDA because there's no SRF funding. So it's going to be an additional hoop to jump through to get funding for that because USDA does not fund during the construction. So you have to get a temporary construction loan during the period of the construction and then transfers through USDA loan. So it was 968 from Conant to front door here and about 978 from here to the new, the newest section, which is just by Party Patrol, Fulmer Meadow Road. So we're looking at almost $2 million. And I'm hoping to put it together and have it dawns 4,900 feet and it's going to be a miserable summer for the residents and everybody traveling on the street, but we could save maybe $100, $150,000 for mobilization and unit pricing because this project out here that the first phase was nearly $400 per foot to finish from cut to repave. So it's very expensive out here. So we might be able to save it, but that brings us into the.
We're still dudes.
Yeah.
We got the best crew in water.
So, I mean, that puts us already, based on the numbers that I co-hosted at Town Hall when I started here, we're roughly $3.4 million in debt before I take any loans out. That's the water department, long debt, term service. So passed around, some people say, that's not really that much.
Well, that's existing debt that's on the books now that the current rate pay is making your 234,000.
And that's how, the latest was $1.7 million for the booster station, which is the tie-in to East Hampton for emergency water and supplemental water and our new treatment plant down there at the booster, which included the potassium hydroxide.
I don't know that you know this answer, but it's the, was it WWTA?
Water Pollution Abatement Trust.
Is that still a 2%?
Gladly you can help me on that. I'm just learning what that term meant after it was abbreviated and the budgeting places. I'm not even sure that, that exists.
Yeah.
I think it deleted it from last year's budget.
Well, it is a state program where specifically for drinking water in the Commonwealth, you can go to them to get it. And I haven't looked at it in a couple of years, but it was always locked at 2% interest, which is cheaper than what the town can borrow at.
Right. And USDA is around 20% also. I mean, there is a line item, one of the revenue ledgers.
Which is why a lot of times on water debt, it's 50-year debt at the 2%.
That's more already funded at that rate too.
But we're not getting any SRF funding to do the water treatment. It just doesn't score high enough.
I heard.
Yeah, the lead service and PFOS.
There's different pockets of SRF work for this project.
On the PFOS, well, I mentioned PFOS, we, good news, bad news, we are not zero. We have one PFSSS is not zero, it's not non-detectable laboratory, but it's right at the method detection limits of the laboratory detection, the equipment, the actual technology. Good news, bad news is it's well below standards, it's 0.53 micrograms per trillion. And that was our May sample. Our October sample was 0.63. But we, before my time, we were entering a class action lawsuit with 3M, Tyco, something else. And so I filled out so much paperwork and I'm hoping there's some, some type of return. There's scores now. So we're at that point of, we're not zero, but we have a tiny bit that we can say there's some, because we can't say it's zero. So I feel like we're, if we're going to have some in the water, it's like the perfect place to be. I'm hoping if they score it and if they give a dollar score, we might fall into $600,000 because we're scored at 604,000. But it was clearly multiple times from attorneys on the paperwork, this is not a dollar amount, it's just the score. So I got my fingers crossed that it'll be at least a dollar.
Any idea when you might hear on that or?
It's coming, they keep them now, soon, soon, soon.
Interesting.
So.
Okay.
All of that. Back to the operating budget, a lot of other stuff, I ended up at purchased water, treatment, chemicals and supplies is probably one of our bigger's also. The budget for about 63,000. That is chlorine, potassium hydroxide and sodium hyperchlorite. We buy them in, I won't say bulk quantities, but we have small day tanks, we get them in small delta drums and transfer them all real hot. Obviously, this time of year, we transfer every four days, but during the summertime, it's almost every other day when we're double capacity or roughly our, the average daily use right now is about 300, 298, 300,000 gallons, but our overall annual usage is 376 per day to average daily. So that's taken in 752,000 gallons a day for summer. And so, other ones are laboratory testing, vehicle maintenance, uniforms, DEP invoice. One thing I never knew, I got a bill for $1,279 for 2023 because we pumped 118 million gallons out of aquifer in a DEP center, so that's still pretty cheap, but I, first time I ever heard of it also.
I guess you're reading your 6:00 AM water quality report.
Somebody is. Pretty good bullet point to provide their job.
And so the last one is cybersecurity. I had it on there for $25,000 last year, but I got a $30,000 grant through DEP and we're in the midst of getting that done. So it's been $11,000 of it in hardware and software.
Is there any, it sounds like we've grouped a lot of things under the water operating expenses. Is there anything that makes sense to pull out, like your purchase of water, for example? Should that be something that should be more visible and trackable or?
It's trackable on my daily sheet, I don't know how much.
I would suggest it's deliberately done that way. Think of the schools. You can just see the top line. Because it's an enterprise, you're not really allowed to dig into the, on the school, definitely, but I'm thinking they're taking the same approach.
I see.
Why?
Well, on the school specifically?
No, no, I missed.
Well, because it's an enterprise account, as long as the receipts are covering the expenses, it's up to the independently elected commissioners.
Yeah, okay, to manage that. That's true.
I mean, I was balled out last year about transparency and I put this spreadsheet out the.
Well, people will still talk about it, yes.
I love it. Nothing to hide.
And then the general long-term debt is related to what?
Oh, that is this long-term debt sheet right here. I mean, we just hit in 2023 to 2024 and it's actually kind of exciting that it was $52,000 dropped because one of our long-term debts dropped off.
So that's what's debt currently issued by the water department that they're paying? Their annual debt contribution?
Principal and interest or just interest?
I'm not a banker.
That's got to be principal and interest.
Well, he needs the money, he needs the money to pay principal somehow. I mean, it looks like interest in a way because it's declining, as principal declines.
Well, that's true.
Which one is it?
The one that just dropped off was this one right here. There was some debt reconciliation.
Always declining payments?
Something in USDA.
No, well, I don't know how Bradley does it here, but we usually want the flat, so just give me the same, so I have the same number to budget for it.
Although I was looking at it, Scott gave me the debt schedule, most of those loans are fixed principal, so the same amount of principal plus interest. So they decline, the total payments decline.
To get to whatever your memory.
So good news, bad news. Definitely pulling together a bunch of things that need to get done. Bad news is, probably the next town, not this town meeting, but the following one, going to ask for two million dollars to be working on. What that's, what that's going to help us do is actually eliminate, it'll probably work, currently matter, but I didn't get, the lead service inventory of six hundred ninety, the letters that we sent out, and it's broken out into two different parts, it's private and public. Public is the water main to the front yard, we call that main the curb, we own that, we're responsible for that. If it leaks, we pay for it, we fix it. If it's, we go out there, it's leaking out your front yard, we shut the valve off and it stops leaking. All more. And we can identify the public side, I'm sorry, the private side, which should be going into people's basements daily, looking at lead pipes and, you know, plastic lead, but lead doesn't exist in town that I can tell based on Roger Ball, Joe Slattery and Todd, Jay Raj, guys together, they have a hundred years of experience, you know, service here, and they've never seen a lead line. We do have two galvanized lines in town, which are also part of that, and I kind of leave that off a lot, so it's easier to say lead service, but it's lead and galvanized wiring replacement. So this whole section is our oldest section in town, so everybody on this section, everybody on East Street, which is probably also going to get done in twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine, where it's going to be another half a million dollars that we're going to request to borrow because that section of road is getting redone, and we're going to be, that project's going to get done under what's called a non-participating, not participating contract. So we're only going to pay a unit price per foot to get put in the ground, and we're going to get new water main from here to Clark Street, and everybody's going to get a new water with the public side, so we're going to get off the street. And that's going to be in our best interest because it's probably going to save us four hundred thousand dollars. And that street will not have to get dug up because typically, they pave the street, we're, water department's usually the first ones to bring into it. A week, a month, so we typically have a six by six hole in it, no matter where you go, it's just, I don't know if it's the paving guys, the water guys, or just the laboratory of the rolling, loosen stuff up.
Yeah.
Capital budget is hard to decide.
So I have a question, you were at a previous select board meeting not long ago, and we were talking about personnel, but personnel doesn't come out of the enterprise fund.
Yeah. That's hard to handle there, four people.
Okay.
The contract rep with East Hampton, how long is that, I know it's twenty years, but how many years do we have left?
I believe, well, that building was built in twenty twenty one, so I believe we're only three to four years old. No, we have a lot of un, I was told once that I worried.
Too much when they ask questions about things.
We have a water main break that walk hot road, there's a water tank. All the pressure in town comes from the water tank. I have to shut that out for twelve hours to fix it because it's a flawed main road. We don't have a system in place from East Hampton that will.
Give the water.
The water, I mean, because that, that system over there just turns on based on that tank level. Stupid, just diamond sensors, pressure differential sensors, and says, hey, I'm at eleven nine, eleven point nine feet, turn on, turn off when, at the, at the set level, turn off. But there's no way to balance it, so I'm trying to work some of that stuff in with our industrial controls guy to come up and reprogram some of the, this data program systems to kind of come up with a run on pressures versus just levels. So there's a lot of stuff that, whether it was never thought of or never passed from one regime to the other, that keeps me worried sometimes.
It sounds like you're trying to fix a lot of these little things, sort of little quote unquote little things, but things that need fixing that maybe had a lot of attention.
So much time, tracking stuff down, tracking, I mean, the amount of our person to get this.
Yeah.
It was days, begging and walking from desk to desk, you know, like, where is it? I want to know where two hundred, four, three thousand dollars of budget is going, I want to break down it.
Okay, good. Anybody else have questions?
I do.
Yeah.
How often do we maintain or inspect our fire hydrants?
We flush them annually, we're required by the DEP to flush them manually. We do not touch every single fire hydrant in town. For the most part, you know, some of the stuff that you see in the news, the fire hydrant didn't work. The fire hydrant worked, it just wasn't a lot of pressure because it was an eighty year old pipe that was tuberculated down. But this big one that was new, there's so many minerals on it, it's this big, you just can't produce the volume through it. For the most part, when I worked in Hoyle, same thing, fire hydrants always worked, there just wasn't a lot of pressure. One of the ones that hit the news in Hoyle when I was there was, it wouldn't shut off, the rod broke, you know, a hundred year old things break. And so a lot of the ones you see are pressure related, but, I mean, a lot of the hydrants around here are, some I don't even want to look at, they look like they're so old, I don't want to look at them, but.
Yeah, there's a couple there are sunken pretty low. But you said you have to flush them annually, but you don't touch every hydrant annually.
Nope.
So you don't flush them annually?
We, I'll get you a number, I'll tell you how many, we have a flushing program that goes on for about three weeks, there's four zones.
Yeah.
We flush three hundred and seventy five thousand gallons of water out of our system. It's a unidirectional thing, so we have to go out, we.
So you don't have to open each individual hydrant, you could like skip every other one if it's on that line.
We do it at the end of the lines.
I got you.
Trying to get the, yeah, increase the velocity through like greater than forty five feet per second through one line, and that's getting out any scouring dirt, any biofilm that might be inside.
I think way back one, two, we had, I think we had figured out, maybe it was with the firefighter grant that we just worked on, but I believe we came up with about thirty, thirty five to forty percent of the town is, is on hydrant, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Most of it is.
I did get that from chief.
I think it was right around that figure, I think that is actually on.
I think it was higher, it was higher than thirty five, forty.
I think so, but anyway, we did it based on the miles, because I think I asked Ray in the how many miles. How many really miles, yeah.
We had forty five miles a main, I think we did the math that way.
Anyway, but yeah, so there's not quite as many hydrants as I might have guessed at some point, but a lot too, yeah. Okay. If no other questions, thank you very much, Brett, for sharing all that.
Please me with your numbers.
Sharing all that information, yeah.
I don't remember what I ate for breakfast after.
Do you know how much you ate?
Good. All right, so we'll let you depart, and what else do we have on our agenda here?
Remember we had our astronaut.
I think we're. No, I'm sorry, we have our next select board meeting on March fourth, and that will be.
Business.
That's more town budget, what's up?
Yeah, TA, treasurer, benefits debt, a still joint one.
Yeah.
Yeah, a few other things.
Okay.
More internal.
Right, okay, so March, March fourth, that'll be a joint one also with, with finance.
But will there be a business component for us or not?
It should be a regular, that'll be a regular select board meeting, so we'll have some other, some other items on the.
Understanding to keep bringing forward, because we have some family members.
We do, so these have been special in between our regular select board meetings, just.
I'm calling that out for clarity.
Yeah, yeah, no, just, just finance hearings.
Yep.
So we had a regular select board meeting last week, whatever it was, so our next one is next time around, agree?
We have work to do.
We definitely have a lot of work to do, no doubt about that. All right, so would you all like to adjourn your meeting first?
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
And I'll have most adjourned, all right, Stephen and Cindy, all those there? We are adjourned at eight fifty, thank you very much.